All right, it's 12 o'clock. I'm gonna call the town council work session for Tuesday, October 14th to order, and we are having our budget retreat. Thank you, everyone, for all the work you've put into this. And I, I did want to just set the stage that, um, you know, everyone on this town council really appreciates all the work that everyone puts in. We deeply, deeply trust the staff at the Town of Breck. We get tons of feedback from the community members that they're generally happy with what you all are doing, what we're doing. So when we're going through these budgets, it's, you know, you've enabled us to be able to look at some of the minute details by doing so much of the heavy lifting and all of the big work. So thank you, guys, for everything that you've put into this. Your months of your life. Shannon?
All right, I'm gonna kick us off. Um, just with, it's a perfect segue into this little piece that I wanted to give to you all, um, which is an overview of what happens in the budget process before today. Because we don't really ever talk about that. And as I was making some notes, I thought, I mean, I probably should have put this on a slide because it's gonna sound like a lot of information in a, just a short amount of time. But I, I think I'll just start by saying, our process for budget starts in May. Dave and Tracy and the finance team put together a schedule for everyone, and it's fairly detailed. They go through setting up our payroll costing sheets, which are centrally spreadsheets where Tracy sets up all the information so then the departments can go through and say, here's this person, here's what they make, and then it calculates all of the budget information or benefit information that we need to figure out how much we need to budget for overtime and wages and social security and all the other things that go along with, with payroll. Uh, so that's a pretty, um, large undertaking. And Tracy does that in conjunction with Lucy Laws, who's our, our payroll person. They lay out all the key dates that are gonna come up over the course of essentially the entire summer, which is probably not the way everyone would like to be spending their summer working on budget, but it's what we do. And then they also work to set up the variance memos, which are the documents. Well, Scott and I read all of the documents, but one of the things that we require is that the departments, if there's a variance between what they had in their budget in 2025 and what they're asking for in 2026, and if it's more than a thousand dollars, they have to put together an explanation of why that's the case. And I will fully admit, um, that even though we set that number at a thousand dollars, I will always ask why they have a variance, even if it's only $500. So, but it saves them from having to, to type all that. So that's how the process starts. Um, another thing that I wanted to touch on, because I know it's been just a point maybe of curiosity, um, especially in this kind of odd economic time we're in. So part of the actual budget process is, um, requesting new positions. So if a department wants to add a position, or they want to reclassify someone who's currently employed by the town, but they think for some reason they should be a higher pay grade or something like that, we have a process for that, and there's a timeframe within the budget process where they have to submit those requests. They go through HR, they come to, to me and Scott, and then we ultimately decide if we're going to approve those and put anything in the budget to bring to you for a request. So, um, this year, we probably had, I don't know, four or five different requests. Most were not for new personnel, but they were for reclassification of current personnel. And the only one that was approved to come forward, um, was the new attorney that we've already talked about. So just so you know, there is a process for that. And then that, it is not part of the budget process, but I do want to touch on, when you have vacancies, there's also a process for that. So if a department wants to fill a vacancy, they have to do a justification for why that position needs to be filled, um, what the challenges would be if we didn't fill the position, what the benefits are of filling the position, and then that also goes up through HR and, uh, normally it needs to be approved by Scott as well. So we take a look at whether we're trying to add a new position or even just fill an existing vacant position. We do look at all of those to make sure that there is an organizational need for the, for the position to be filled. Then, so round about June, um, we start looking at the bigger requests. So CIP, our internal service funds, facilities, things like that. And we do make the final approval of any additional positions of our payroll costs and of our overtime costs. And then in July, the departments have to have completed their projections for the current year as well as their budget numbers for the upcoming year. Finance goes through all of those, uh, budget numbers in detail, and then they meet with each of the departments individually to go through their numbers, get any questions answered that they might have, address any anomalies or numbers that just don't, you know, they're obviously, there's some big disparity or there, there's something wrong with the numbers. So they run through all of that. Those variance memos get completed, and then I meant to bring it down to show you what our level one budget book looks like, but it's about that big. Um, and it, it's, it's the use of a lot of paper. We've tried it a different way, and that's really the only way for us to take a good, solid look through all of the budgets and all of the budget lines. So then they produce, finance produces those books for us, and Scott and I go through them line by line. And then we meet with all the departments again after finance does that. And we make changes. And I will say, one of the things that I was looking at this year is, you know, are there percentage increases in budget lines where we haven't used all of our budget in the past year or the year before? And we're anticipating maybe some increase in tariffs or increase in costs. But can we absorb that in the savings we've had in previous years? And so we took a really hard look this year in particular, and we're obviously always looking, but we took a really hard look this year at any increases to any budget lines to make sure that we could justify why we needed the additional funding. So essentially, that's sort of the, the process. Once we get through all of our meetings, then it's up to Dave and Tracy to go through and update all of the numbers again. And that's where, um, they start doing their five-year projection once we've, we've done that so that, um, you know, they can make sure that they have the best possible information to go forward with. And that gets us ready for our CIP presentation to you. So we've been giving you that five-year projection now for, I guess, just the last two years. Um, we also have meetings with Shannon, usually one or two or three, to go through the CIP before that comes to you as well. And we take that time between the CIP and the first meeting in October to make any additional changes based on the information that we heard from you at the, um, CIP review. So that's a real quick description of what that process is throughout the summer. And I hope that it helps both council and the public feel really confident with the level of, um, review that goes into and the critical eye that we take in reviewing the budget every year. So do you have any questions on that process? Okay. Um, two other things that I wanted to point out, uh, you know, we've already reviewed the fees and the full-time employee equivalent numbers. So those are in your packet. We don't plan on spending a lot of time on those unless there's something that needs to be highlighted. Guess going back to our, my comment about filling positions, uh, for those who hadn't heard, Aubrey Seeall is leaving us to go to Tree Top. She's our grant writer, grant administrator. And given the current state of grants, both federal and state, uh, we don't think there's a need to fill that position right now. So the plan is to leave that vacant, at least for a while. And then the last thing I want to mention, it is a second bullet on your agenda. We have included the, your goals and priorities. I wasn't gonna spend a lot of time on those. They're really in the packet so that, kind of a reminder, both to, to staff, to council, to the community, that this is where council has asked us to focus our attention. And in keeping with that, you would expect that our budget would also reflect direction to achieve these goals and priorities. So that's why they're in here, but we do have a few minutes if there's anything that you all wanted to talk about in relation to those.
Questions, comments on the goals and priorities?
Just one small comment. I think, um, the, um, of the destination management plan. I know in sustainability, they were, you know, kind of looking at that as all sustainability. For me, that's not all sustainability. That's quality of life. That's authentic character. That's, um, it's probably half and half for me. Um, and I was definitely a part of that process. And remember the discussions clearly. It was about congestion. It was about livability of our town during peak times, and how could we get some cars off the road? Certainly, it is absolutely sustainability, but I, in my view, about half of that is sustainability. So it's not all sustainability. I, I think it includes some infrastructure investments, that I believe need to be made to, uh, to help with some of that congestion and, and, um, so I just, just a different view a little bit. Kelly and I talked a little bit about it. And, uh, and I saw it in sustainability, you know, that, that their view was that that was all about sustainability. So I just wanted to share my personal view on that one.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So we've got a pretty full agenda. We're gonna spend a fair amount of time on the general fund. We're essentially working in the opposite direction through our funds as we have done in the past few years, where we've started with our accommodations and worked our way down to the general fund. And by the time I think everyone got to the end of the day, they were okay with it, and we didn't have a lot of discussion about it. So we're gonna flip it around and start with general funds so we can spend a little bit more time on our operational budget. Um, and then we'll work through all of our funds, um, and then get down to some of the, you know, kind of the five-year, this KPIs, the debt schedule, all those kinds of things we'll do sort, towards the end of our discussion. So we've got plenty of time today. We're happy to talk through and answer any questions you might have. It just as a matter of process, Dave and Tracy will run through the budget assumptions and the flow of transfers, and then we'll work through the general fund kind of from start to finish. We have all of the department heads or the folks who are responsible for the individual departments and divisions here. And so they'll come down and be at the table. They may highlight some things that are or not in their memos, and then obviously be available to answer any questions that you might have. So, um, they're really prepped and prepared for this, so please take advantage of having them here to ask them whatever you feel you need to.
Great. Dave?
My last budget, so.
Oh.
But, um, anyway, uh, thanks for the overview, Shannon. And, um, so there is a lot of work that goes behind this. And, um, uh, and a lot of it is prepped at the end of it as well with our kind of assumptions rolling in for the next five years and how we're positioned. I'm gonna have Tracy go through the assumptions and, um, and kind of walk through the next couple of items. And then, as Shannon mentioned, when we start going through the funds, we'll have the individual department managers come up and talk through those as well. So you won't hear us going on for a few hours. It'll be mixed up and more collaborative. So go ahead, Tracy.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're here for my favorite day of the year, which is very exciting, next to, you know, audits, but, uh, this is where we are. I can't believe this is our fourth budget cycle for Dave and I, and it's kind of bittersweet knowing that it is our last one that will be partners in crime on this. But the nice thing about the budget cycle that I feel over the last four years, that each year, it gets better and better. And so I'm already excited about thinking about kind of goals and ideas that I've got for next year's budget. So I'm excited already for next year. So, you know, we're gonna get started with this one. You will see in the, the budget book, um, we have the five-year plan for each fund. Gonna be happy to take questions on any, that you have on the five-year, but today we're focused really on 2026 because in a couple of weeks' time, when I come back to ask to adopt the 2026 numbers, that's what it is. But from a GFOA, uh, standpoint, we do the five-year, not only for them, for that criteria, but also for our future planning. So please feel free to ask if you've got questions on those later years. So starting off with the 2026 budget assumptions, I think May's gonna bring that up as well. Thank you. Um, I just, a couple of them I just would like to run through. I'll let May just catch up. Okay, thank you. Um, from accommodation tax is flat to 2025 projection. So that brings us revenue of $9.3 million. The sales tax, uh, down by 3% of one and a half million from projection. That really takes us from 45.3 million down to 43.8 million for '26. Ret is also down one and a half million to the 2025 projection. So putting numbers against that, that's taking our revenue from 7.5 million to 6 million. Property tax reflects the assessed valuation. We receive 5.4 million for the assessed valuation. And with the nicotine tax being down to a projection by 25%, that really takes it from 800,000 down to 612,000 for our budget. Accommodation regulatory fee that we're reducing by 1.7, and that's due to the loss of licenses. That really means that we're just dropping from 6.9 million to 6.8 million. Um, and the marijuana tax reduced by 15 and a half percent, um, for to 2025 projection is dropping us from 369,000 down to 312. With regards to reduced investment by 2 million, we were, we're still on track for 7 million in, interest for this year. Uh, we're taking it down to five for next year, anticipating a drop in interest rates. Um, and for the lift ticket tax being 2% higher to 2025 projection, that really means that we're taking it from 4.4 million up to 4.5 million. Uh, one other change that we had to when we went through the, uh, CIP and we talked about some of the assumptions at that point, for personnel, we've got, uh, merit based on a 4%. And the healthcare benefit cost increase that we, uh, use a consideration from Brown and Brown Consultants, that is increasing from 5.58% to 5.9, sorry, 5.58 million to 5.9 million. But Mistea will be talking a little bit more about that as we get to the healthcare benefit funds. Another thing just to point out, putting numbers against this is right at the bottom of the page where we speak to the Employee Down Payment Assistance Program of 1.5 million. Um, we are currently at, um, 800,000 for this year, uh, for, uh, loans given out. We anticipate probably another two, uh, hopefully before the end of this year will be requested. Um, and next year, we anticipate or plan for five new loans being extended. Looking to the five-year, uh, projection. Sales tax and accommodation tax is flat for the long term. That's gonna realize us about 53 million. Nicotine is staying flat at 612,000. Property tax, we are keeping flat to the 5.4 million. Accommodation regulatory fee, we are continuing to, to reduce that down. So you'll see we're going from the 6.8 million, and by we get, time we get to 2030, we anticipate that to be around about 6.5 million. Investment income, we are keeping it flat to the 5 million. Uh, but one thing that we need to really take into consideration, we'll see this in the cash flow at the end. Our cash position will be diminishing, so we are, um, basing that on interest rates dropping, but also have to consider if our cash position is, uh, lower, that may have to come down a little more. Uh, parking income is flat. That stays at 5.57. You'll see that across the future years. Whereas lift ticket tax, we are increasing that by the 3% um, based on the CPI and the cap that we have from Vail. So that's gonna grow us from 4.5 million for the '26 budget up to 5.1 million for 2030. Uh, water rents will grow 10% annually, um, and James will be speaking to this a little more, but that's going to take us from 6.8 million for '26 up to 10 million by 2030. Uh, marijuana, uh, tax, we are keeping flat at that 312,000. And you'll see a note in here, we speak to the utility fund potentially taking on a $31 million debt in 2028. We'll talk a little bit more as we get to the utility fund and actually, once we get to the, the cash flow. We have considered that loan coming in and have built in a, uh, the debt repayment schedule also starting in 2028. So you're going to see that increased, uh, debt expense based on that 31 potential million that we will need. For, under the personnel section, the increase of the healthcare benefit cost to grow 5% annually. Uh, we are anticipating that going from 5.9 up to 7.1, um, million that the healthcare fund will need. And that's going to be funded by the allocation process that we have for per employee, uh, across the entire town that is an internal service that will then fund the healthcare benefit fund to cover those costs. Gonna pause just to see any questions on assumptions?
Would you, would you guys consider the sales tax revenues, the kind of the engine for the operating funds? I mean, I know it's a portion of the total revenue, but much of the others are restricted and such. So when we look at just the operations costs of running town.
Yes.
Consider that being the revenue.
Yeah, it's the engine that feeds us for sure. Yeah. And as we, I mean, we put it all to excise, unless it's especially allocated to BTO or like open space, but other than that, it would go to excise. And, um, you know, that then feeds all of our CIP projects. If housing needs any money, our general fund, everything is pretty much coming out of the excise fund to handle our town projects we do have.
It, sales tax, just so I'm looking at the numbers right, it's down about 20% since '24, 2024?
Yeah, but I would say that was, um, probably a part of the, of the boom, if you will, that we would have had from a COVID. Yeah, that with 23 and 4, we really were at a high from a COVID timeframe perspective. I don't know if we're down 20%. I don't think, yeah, I don't, I don't think we're down 20.
It's more like six.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's 20.
And I'm just looking at sales tax. I'm not looking at all of that.
Right, right.
And, um, yeah, and I'm just, um, you know, I'm a believer of let's, let's pump that engine a little and see if we can get those, you know, the mainstream business.
We've held our own this year. I mean, with, I mean, it has come down a little bit, but we've been able to, I mean, our projected revenue for the town on everything is actually higher than our budget, which is great with everything that's been going on with the economy. But, um, you know, we're just trying to put a little bit of a pause and as we go forward and kind of see what that might look like, uh, you know, on a conservative basis.
I just wanna make sure I'm looking at it the right.
But I, when, when we get to excise, we can look. I don't think it's 20 from '24, but we'll double check that. Yeah.
Yeah. And again, I'm just talking to the sales tax. The main, mainstream business is collecting, so, sales.
Yeah, in-town retail.
Yeah, in-town retail, restaurants, just, you know, basically that sales tax collection.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
This is a, a visual I put together just to, for those who like graphs, um, just to kind of show how the flow of money comes in and how we sort of move it around to help and fund all of the other, uh, areas around the town. So in the center, we've got, like you said, the engine, right? So we have the excise tax fund, and Pam will be speaking to this at her presentation. And below each of the funds, I've kind of detailed out the, the main, uh, the priorities within each fund. And you'll see those directional arrows really showing you how the money comes into excise tax and then moves to every other fund. And then from there, it may move to another fund, um, to help support that. So for an example, you'll see that, uh, the excise tax, um, takes money down to, uh, sorry, will take money to the, uh, parking transportation, but then from there, it then moves on up to capital to then fund, uh, those investment projects to support that fund. Um, but just a little visual to help kind of understand how the money moves around our town.
It's a maze. When you first start here, you scratch your head for about six months. It does work.
Works quite well, in my opinion, so, yeah.
I did think it was that confusing. It was good. I like it. I like it. Okay, um, I'm just gonna give a very quick highlight overview of the general fund, but we are gonna be inviting up all of the leaders of each department to speak very specifically. But if we're looking at just the roll-up of the general fund, you'll see that the, uh, the high-level revenues and the expenses are laid out before you. The only thing I really wanted to point out on this page is the reserve for the nicotine program. Um, I do not have this projected, um, sorry, proposed 26 going up, but I do anticipate at the end of this year, I do a, a true-up, uh, journal entry where we book the, uh, net profit or loss on the nicotine program. And I anticipate probably another 200,000 getting invested into the reserve based on the, uh, the, the profit we have in that program. So I do anticipate that to be above a million once I close the books for the year. Um, and then just for Tabor, just as a little reminder, the taxpayer bill of rights, uh, this is where we hold 3% of revenue net of taxes and fees for taxes, and that's a requirement, um, we have to have as an incumbents.
Tracy, how does Tabor impact the town?
It, it's just really a reserve that we have to hold in place to cover contingencies and emergencies, to cover, to show that we can cover those, uh, ex, expenses in case of an emergency situation.
Okay, so it's not typically how one would think of Tabor of allowing money back to taxpayers. It is a different provision of Tabor that makes it reserves.
Yeah, correct. I mean, we do hold already, uh, the operating, um, reserve or restriction of four months. Also as a, to be able to show that we can cover our four months' worth of operational expenses. And this kind of layers on top, and it looks at certain criterias of what expenses we can consider. And we have to then base that calculation on, and that's another journal entry I do at the end of the year to calculate that.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
So I believe Peyton is talking to, oh, Scott is, okay.
Thanks, Tracy. So we are starting off with the general government category, so page seventeen, for those who are following along. So this has, this contains multiple different cost centers, including town council, municipal court, and advice and litigation. There are a few of our funds that do have multiple cost centers underneath them, and so you'll have multiple people, multiple voices outlining this one. So in brief, the one that I'm handling really is town council. That's the cost that's, the expenses based on, you all, mayor and town council from meals and supplies for membership fees and conference travel and the like. What you see in the, in the budget highlights is essentially this year and twenty-five, there's an additional seventy-five thousand dollars. If you recall, that money was being allocated to cover the donation to the youth dentistry practice that Elevated Health assumed maybe a month ago. So that is why there's an overage as far as the projection for seventy-five thousand dollars. And then there's a minor change for twenty-six, I would say relatively minor change of about forty-seven hundred dollars. And that's really based on the fact that we're going to shift how we handle devices for you all, so that you no longer have to use a specific device. But instead, we'll get a, an allocation to allow you to sort of reimburse for the technology that you use for this. And lastly, there was a travel cost change this year. So this year, we were very lucky to have lots of our meetings, CML, CAST, Mountain Towns twenty thirty, all here in, in, in the county. And so next year, because we, because you will be traveling to those, there's a little bit additional travel costs in there as well, so. Any questions on that? I can, if not, I can pass it over to Helen.
I have a question about that seventy-five thousand. Is that where we, because there are many times during the year that we decide to give like FERC a hundred thousand or whatever. Is that where we always track that? Is in the town council budget?
I think for this year, we did. In other times, we've put it under grants, and so we were trying to streamline that and put it into a place to make it more transparent. So I think going forward, the plan is to keep it here. It's more of a, so it's very clear as to what that is. And then the grants will be restricted to those things that actually are grants or like the arts, you know, art donations will be in there because those are more consistent.
Okay, and so if we knew that we wanted to give some money like coming up soon, would we need to increase this, that budget here to not have an overage? I guess is what.
If you know it, if you know the amount, we could make that adjustment here.
Okay.
But it's for about a dollar amount.
But if you don't know, and you just know that with the changes at the federal and the state level, it's likely that some of our local nonprofits are going to need some additional support. We can, you can put some money in the budget, so you have it in there for the, that purpose. Or we can handle it like we have in the past where we go through and we look at how we're doing, what we have available for funding. And then you make a decision based on that at the time.
That's probably best. How do you guys feel about that?
Inappropriation.
To make the decision after we know what's available.
Because we don't have any money in our contingency for the budget.
Right now. So are you guys okay with just waiting and figuring out like what we could afford to give when they come?
I'd, I'd ask Dave and Tracy whether, from a, an accounting standpoint, we ought to put something in there, because I think we're going to be doing that.
Yeah.
Either potentially be a budget appropriation a year from now in December twenty-six. If it, but this is a part of the general fund, so there's many ins and outs that can happen during the year of the general fund. And so it might not even require an appropriation. But I would say, without knowing the what, but if you have a dollar amount that you might, you know, that we could, we could make that change. I'm just throwing that out there, because it does seem like we in the past have done items such as this in the past.
Yeah, it seems like. I like the idea of having money in there so that we know when we get a request, like, oh, we've already spent this much. How much more is reasonable to spend rather than just like donating, 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 and then at the end realizing we.
And it, and it, you still would, I think, do the discipline to see where we are before you'd actually say yes or no. I mean, a budget's a budget, but this can happen.
Yeah.
Right? So I, I would say you'd still have that practice.
And we would be more most likely to look at something like nicotine funds to see where we are than trying to assess the health of the general fund and where we are in the middle of the year, which with timing of bills and things like that, it's just really hard to do. But it's entirely up to you all. We can accommodate it either way.
I like having a line item for it. Like it's easier to follow.
Um, I like not having a line item because it'll be on a case-by-case basis and dependent on the health of our funds. And it might not even come from the general fund. I hear you, Marika, but I don't know that that number would be the budget that we'd follow because we would take it on a case-by-case basis and on the health of our fund. So I'd vote for leaving it as is. For the other side.
I think part of me feels the same way because, you know, if there's a demonstrated need and it's for, you know, one of the big three, then we're probably going to make that happen. But just because we have a hundred thousand in there and there's a sustainability request or something, doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to do it. So I don't know, maybe it makes us, gives us the freedom to assess the need as well.
And on top of that, we do have a process in which organizations can apply for grants through the town. That is a, you know, it is a process that most organizations fall, you know, follow on a regular basis. And I think I'd want to encourage that to continue when possible. And so I think keeping the contingency to a zero at the moment makes the most sense.
Any others? Dick or Todd, you feel strongly either way?
I, there's good arguments for both, so I'm happy either way. Just the awareness, this discussion is the important part, probably.
Yeah, I think that puts it in there well. I think I personally prefer to have a line item. We know there's going to be a need. I mean, we can see around the corner on this one. I think I worry about the overall gap and out years, and we're not talking crazy money, so it'll work its way out. Does that help?
Three, three, Dick, you have to vote.
I, let's put a, let's put a number in. Let's put, you know, hundred, hundred and fifty or whatever in there. And it's not something we have to spend by any means, but I think there's going to be need with the headwinds we're, we're sailing against, so.
Great. One fifty?
Sure.
Yeah.
Twenty-six, do you want that carried out for the next through twenty thirty as well to continue along that trajectory? Or just is just twenty-six and one and done?
For twenty twenty-six and we'll determine.
Is that enough?
Sure not, but.
It won't be, but I think there is not any way to tell right now.
I mean.
What you're, what kind of asks you're going to get.
Yeah.
We're thinking more social services needs, just so we're all on the same page. Is that what we're all thinking? Just that, kind of that general realm of, of our, our community needs.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's what I'm thinking too, I just want to be sure.
Yeah, I think the budget then recognizes to the community that's looking that we're prepared to make these decisions as we go forward. And we all know we're just guessing at this point, but at least we're recognizing it.
Okay, one fifty for twenty-six, and that's it. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor, mayor and council, municipal court, relatively status quo. The increase is only about one percent for personnel. As noted, the deputy town attorney position will be moved under the town attorney, and that will essentially half the budget of the court legal services because that will be brought on partway through the year, and we do need a prosecutor until that point. And the only other comment I'd make is that our budget is largely determined by the tickets issued by the police department. And we do our best to anticipate what those, the ticket volumes will be. It has varied quite a bit over the last few years based on staffing changes and other factors over there. So we do, we do our best, and that's why you see the little bit of variability every year.
That's good to know. Questions? Thanks, Helen.
Thank you.
Litigation?
I can if you like.
Okay.
So advice litigation is really the cost center that talks about, obviously, the attorney and the new, the one FTE that has been added for twenty twenty-six as proposed is a deputy town attorney, as Helen just mentioned. The idea is this will be a full-time year-round employee who will handle a number of the tasks that Keely has, has a lot going on. And she's got, yeah, some assistance to make that happen, including municipal court as part of that. And as Helen said, this person would not start as currently budgeted until the end of April. And so it's the partial for twenty-six, and then going forward, it would stay on there. But as I mentioned earlier, this is the only FTE addition that's being proposed for the twenty twenty-six budget. Keely, you want to fill that?
Yeah, I can just, the goal is to consolidate and, and make more efficient the legal services that the legal department provides to you with also the ultimate goal of reducing the amount of outside counsel that we have to hire for different things. So ideally, and there's, there is a lot going on. And I think the town, you know, has had, has been really lucky and has had great legal advice. And I also think that there's been a little bit of a backlog. So there's some things that, as, you know, we've talked, I think I've talked to most of you about a number of different things that I'm, I'm working on and working to bring us up, up to speed with, with different pieces like code enforcement and municipal court. But also our code in general has some, has not been updated in a long time in a number of areas. So that is going to be a big undertaking. And, yeah, happy to answer any questions about sort of how I see this moving forward. And certainly the help will be much appreciated, and I think it will make our whole program much more efficient and, and function better for the town.
Great.
Kelly, does advice and litigation, does that also include our outside council costs?
Yes, it does. And so, you know, it's a little hard to tell. Legal budgeting in that respect is always complicated because we don't know when we're going to get sued and, or when we might have to sue someone. So, you know, over the last couple of years, we've had some unexpected lawsuits, and we've had some ones that I think probably could have been avoided. But we didn't, we weren't in a place to be able to do that. So I'm hopeful that that will actually go down, the, the numbers that, that we have for outside, outside counsel. But you kind of just don't know. It's extremely difficult to predict. Yeah.
Great. Good, keep moving.
All right, as we move over to the executive and management area, I will kick it off by talking about the Breck and Ridge Professional Building. You'll see that this is the building that's next door to us. We have, it's fully leased with ten tenants. We made the change just over a year or so ago where Met Pelant manages the, the facilities and upkeep of that building. And that's really driving the lower expenses from twenty twenty-five budget to twenty twenty-six. And that's because we are no longer having to pay for external contractors to come in and maintain that building. That cost is really being consumed by Matt and his team. The revenue from this is that rental income of five hundred twenty, five hundred eighty-eight thousand. And habitually, there's usually like a three percent increase each year to the rent. Currently, I handle the lease administration, and Scott is responsible for handling any new leases. And we will have some, I think, four tenants next year who are due to, their leases are expiring. So we're going to be working with them to see if they will be wanting to continue, which I believe they will, but.
Questions on that? Okay.
So the next one up is the administrative management, which is the town manager, the deputy town manager, assistant town manager, grants administrator, and executive assistant. Executive administration assistant. Not a big change in here other than you'll see a large, well, sorry, you'll see an addition of the Arts and Cultural Master Plan. There's a figure in there, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and that's the big jump that you're going to see in that number for twenty twenty-six as proposed.
Looks good.
Mistea is up.
Human resources are most important.
Just have a very small increase for the budget for human resources for next year. The biggest thing for us is we are going to try to increase our professional development for our staff and some leadership training. So we've increased by three thousand just for some more professional development and training for our staff. And that's really it. No questions?
Looks like they're happy with that. Thank you.
All right, I'll take nicotine program. I think hopefully in the background in the memo, it gave you a good idea of where we started and where we are today. Just kind of talking about the social services and the nonprofits that are providing that, you know, social safety net for us. The nicotine program revenue allocations are changing in twenty twenty-six. So all of us except the county have passed flavor bans, so we expect revenue to decrease in twenty twenty-six. We're going to set a budget number, what we think that revenue is going to look like, and then we're going to allocate forty percent of that to prevention and cessation programming and sixty percent of that to a grant program specifically for those nonprofits providing that social safety net who are impacted by state and federal cuts. And that, we expect that grant program will, will be administered by the Summit Foundation. So there will be where there had been a million dollars allocated every year to FERC Elevated and Building Hope. They will still be part of that process, but there should be additional funding available or redistribution of that funding plus some additional funding that will be available for other similar nonprofits. If that makes sense.
How much do you, did we haven't anticipated how much the big three would? Or their allotted money would be go down? We don't have that. Okay.
No, no, not yet. We're still working out the details of the grant program.
Yeah. Questions on that?
Okay, so for BSAC, we are looking at a, about a five, a seven percent increase over twenty twenty-five. That is in part due to increased interpreter services for meetings that we now have at every BSAC meeting. And then ten thousand dollars for town party activation event. You may remember we did that in combination with Breck Create last year. And so we are hoping to make that a larger event with music activities, a larger presence and a multilingual, multicultural activity that would lead into the Breck Pride celebration that would happen right after that. And then we would also, there's a small amount budgeted for the Equity Blueprint, which we just think needs a refresh because it was created in twenty twenty, so this will be six years later.
Anything to add? Questions? Great.
Okay, and I'll continue with clerk and muni services. The increase is only about four percent, which is almost entirely personnel costs and an increase in the IT allocation as we do now have May as the clerk role in that position. And so that IT allocation is fully in that role. And then just as a reminder, as you all remember, it's an election year. And so on election years, we do have typically a fifteen thousand dollar additional budget for election expenses. And we do expect to spend that. This year, we. This year, we will be renting our own election equipment at the request of the county. We're not allowed to partner with them for their equipment anymore for security reasons. So we do expect that.
Too bad. Okay. Any questions on that stuff? I know those elections are a big push for you. So thanks for your work towards that. All right, I think we're through that.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll jump to finance next. Basically, there's 10 of us in our finance department and we handle on the revenue side, pretty much all the revenue that the town collects either through taxes or other programs. In addition to that, we do our accounts payable and we pay all of our employees. We manage, we have payroll as well. And then we have the compliance side, which is our audit and the budgets and all the different things we have for internal controls around that as well. Our budget's 1,461, which is about a two and a half percent increase. Most of that's being driven by outside audit support that we're continuing to grow. We've collected since we started our sales tax compliance program about 1.7 million since '23. And already this year, we're over 700 grand that we've collected. And a lot of other opportunities I can't speak about that we're looking at. So I'll just let it go with that. But we do work with an outside firm as well to help us with out of, out of, out of state retailers, if you will. So that's part of the increase we're using with them. And then lastly, we do have normal personnel costs going up, but we've got IT coming down. So they kind of wash. But that's pretty much it from a finance perspective.
And I'll just note, I think what you'll see and as we run through these is departments that have higher expense numbers. We're covering some of the personnel increases with savings in our operational costs where some of the smaller departments like municipal services, they just don't have enough expenses to cover the, to, to, to reduce their operational expense enough to cover the personnel piece. So it's a little, as you, as I ran through it, I thought it's a little wonky where some of the departments are showing, you know, nearly no personnel increase. While others you see it fully.
That's helpful. Thanks.
Yeah.
I was wondering how they were covering the personnel. So. And Dave, while you're up, I apologize, 15% is what I've got, but we'll get to that when you get the excise. So.
Okay.
You're right. It was 20 was high. So we'll get to that with excise.
Any questions on finance? Okay.
Dave's last meeting and my first.
I wasn't sure what to call you with.
Into the fire, haven't even been sworn in yet. So. Yeah, police department budget, we're saving money and actually have a decrease for next year. It's pretty minimal, but it's offset by the reduction to our cost share with the comm center. And it's really just because of the way they restructured what we owe them each year. And then with all the municipalities and the county. So that's really what's bigger, is our biggest offset going into 2026. As always, we have salary savings from personnel. But fortunately, right now we only have three vacancies. Our retention has been really good. We haven't had any academy repayments. And then we projected only one for next year, just as, just in case. But I think that's more of hiring efforts of trying to get people locally that already have housing or are aware of the housing situation and more invested in the community. And culturally, what we're trying to build with people that want to be here for the right reasons. So. I think our efforts in those areas are really helping us budgetarily with maintaining our staff. Questions on anything?
One question.
Okay.
Since it was mentioned in the memo, obviously the Flock safety has some incredible advantages, like the example you laid out. Can you tell us a little bit about how we participate in the network and how data is shared?
Yeah. So whenever we do any sort of data sharing, an agency or requests from us, or we can request from that agency, we really just look at like, are we going to need information with this agency or not? And it's on a case by case basis. But we really want to have it, you know, more locally and with like the Denver areas because people will be driving the I-70 corridor and coming up here. But it's been really effective. The one I highlighted in there over the summer was really beneficial that we were able to get that license plate in there. Figure out that, yeah, this person is in Breckenridge and then start honing down on where the person was. And we actually just recently, us and the sheriff's office along with Fort Collins PD, with some vehicle break-ins, were able to identify a vehicle based on some of our footage and still shots, plus with SO had. And then we got a clear picture of it in the middle of the day in Fort Collins. So through that, we've been able to identify who those people are and worked us, worked together between, you know, other agencies in the state to solve crimes.
Thank you.
I just loved that the example you used, there was no way anyone could publicly question that.
I don't know if this is a fair question for you. Congratulations on the new job, by the way. I'm psyched. It's great. Maybe Shannon or whatever could, should we try to set some policy around how we share that information? Because they, you know, I know it does make some people feel an invasion of privacy. And if we, it might make our citizens more comfortable if we set a policy. Maybe we just say when it, in relation to criminal, judicial criminal activity.
Yeah.
Not civil or, or whatever, you know?
And that's actually one of the components of the system is you have to have a case number associated with whenever you're searching for a license plate or a vehicle description. And not only that, you also have to put a reason for searching for it. So we have an associated case number and a reason why we're looking it up. So.
Right.
In this example, we had the incident number plus, hey, we're looking for this missing child or with the recent one with the vehicle trespasses, like we have the case number and we're using it for a criminal activity so that if we get any questions about it or news requests about it, we can be like, yeah, this is exactly why we're doing it. We're currently operating under our previous automated license plate reader policy that we had whenever the CSOs were doing the parking enforcement and had the license plate reader on that because it pretty much covers everything. Plus the policies that Flock has set forth kind of covers both. We're working on updating our policy to include some of the recommended policies from Flock. But we are using it strictly for criminal enforcement and typically on more serious events. So.
Awesome. I mean, very appropriate uses that you've, you've stated, but be great whenever that policy comes to fruition to bring it before us in a work session, just so that we get a chance to review it.
For sure.
You know, I've had some people express concerns.
No, and, and we did have an issue earlier this year with Loveland PD sharing information with federal agencies and things like that. And we're like, we're not doing anything like that. We're using it for our purposes. You know, or if the sheriff's office wants to use it, you know, because we want to have it serve the purpose for the community that we serve. So.
No, it's awesome.
And if you had a policy and the town council approved it, then you could say to them, I can't.
You can blame it on the mayor.
We'll just keep pushing it up. Yeah. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Garrison.
Yeah.
The one thing I wanted to point out on here, you'll see that the headcount changes in this area from 28.3 up to 29.7. And that's because we are reallocating the 1.3 heads of CSOs that are currently under the Accommodation Unit Compliance Fund. They are being reallocated back 100% to public safety. And that's just because when the review by public safety of where they were dedicating their time, it was predominantly in this, in public safety rather than under the Accommodation Unit Compliance. So they've been reallocated back.
Makes sense. Mark.
Good afternoon. Community development, I'm going to go over planning and building portions of that. The open space division, Duke will go over that separately under the open space fund. In 2026, we're anticipating that we're going to see a reduction in revenues by about 25%. And that's largely due to a slowing overall of development and, and building activity out there. A lot of the projects that you've seen and the planning commission, our staff is seeing coming through BGV, et cetera. The revenues have already been taken in for that. In fact, the Imperial Hotel, which is kind of the last piece, parcel four up there, we'll be seeing the revenues from that coming in here next month as they submit for their building permit. So however, the work doesn't stop there. For example, with our building staff, really the work begins when the money comes in, doing all the plan review, which a thousand sheets of a hotel to review is going to be a three-month process for them. And then after that, several years of inspections that go along with that. So you kind of get the money upfront, but a lot of the work is kind of in, in the rear, so to speak, as far as that goes. In terms of expenditures, we are up about 250,000 for 2026 compared to 2025. And that's largely related to number one, consultant services to assist with the comprehensive plan update that we're planning on doing, as well as inspection services, additional inspection services that we're going to need. What we've found is we've, we have a consultant on retainer that will bring in to occasionally assist us when, with inspections, billing inspections. And next year, we anticipate we'll even need them a little more because of increased volume that we're going to see in terms of the actual inspection work. So I did want to point out, we can offset a lot of that cost in terms of for next, for 2026, because we have salary savings from an unfilled planning position this year. And next year, it's in the budget for next year, but we're proposing not to fill that position. As well as we've had a position for the last half of this year that we haven't filled, that will be filled the beginning of 2026. So, and those savings are about $250,000, we're estimating. So it pretty much offsets that increase next year. Yeah, we've talked a little bit about the comprehensive plan before, but in terms of consultant services, we're really looking for assistance with running our public outreach process, having a really robust engagement process as far as public outreach. Also some special, specialized assistance with redevelopment, analysis of redevelopment and visual modeling, things like that to run by the community. And also then the formatting of the plan itself and an actual really graphically highly presentable plan that we're developing. So we still look at staff kind of steering the development of the comp plan and guiding that forward. And our staff will be heavily involved in that, but it is going to take a, a big lift from consultants as well. Glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mark.
Mark, did you say that there are some grants available for the comp plan for the, some of the costs that are associated with that?
There's some grants available more for like the water supply element piece that's separately actually being budgeted by Public Works. We haven't identified a lot available in, for the general plan itself, but there may be some, we still haven't unearthed everything as far as that goes, Jay.
And that comp plan is not an optional. It's not something that you're doing out of discretion. This is something that is required, correct?
Correct. Pieces of it are. We have to do a strategic, strategic growth element by the end of next year. We're required by the state to do that. We have to do a housing action plan and a housing needs assessment. And then the water supply element, those are all required to be done, you know, by the end of 2026 per state legislature. It makes sense that since the plan is some 17 years old, that we're also addressing that as well as part of this process. But we certainly look for your input on that.
An old plan. Anything else? Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Town Council. This is a first of few times you'll see me this afternoon. This is, what's in front of you right now is under general fund is for the programs that, that exist as part of the general fund. You know, the one big change that has been made that is noted here is, is that the facilities operations have been moved to the facilities fund, which we'll, we'll get to later in this, today's program. Couple of the things I just, to identify as captured here, there's not a lot of revenue with, with these specific programs. These are all services that we put out for the community. We are proposing a pretty modest increase this year, a 3% increase. And some of the items that were listed there are mainly material costs that have all gone up that contribute to those additional costs. We do look at, do and carefully scrutinize all of those different uses that we have within the department. And I think we've been really fortunate over the years to, to reduce in some of the areas specifically salt or sand salt, combination of what we put down for traction on the roadways. We've reduced quite a bit of usage of that. And that's really through kind of both better work with our staff and also just some of the technologies that are available with some of our equipment as well. The one thing that we're also increasing as part of streets is we're looking to do some additional roadway resurfacing projects for their asphalt patching, seal coating. Of course, sealing, striping is in that. And that's all, you know, kind of with the, you know, the same mission to maintain our pavement condition index that we, we strive to keep seven or greater. Other than that, probably the last thing to kind of highlight there, we are adding six bike racks. And that was kind of, of way everyone had a chance to kind of see some of the need for additional bike racks this past summer with some of the events that we had. So we're being proactive there and procuring some new bike racks for next year. With that, I'll take any specific questions.
Great. For James.
James, on the overlay and the, the extra expense to the streets, is that in the CIP as well where they are connected? Or does that piece, I guess, what's the difference from the overlay that we're doing that's in the CIP versus what is in the budget for streets?
There, there, there is a little bit of an overlap in that, but largely a lot of the programs that are listed here are smaller programs that are run within the streets division. While the ones that you see in the capital are larger roadway projects that entail larger operation, kind of melon fill type situations where we're doing a lot more surface area.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, James.
You make it all look so easy, James.
That's the staff. We have great staff.
The one thing I just wanted to point out here, and James will talk to this more once we get to the facilities fund, you'll see that the rental income, we don't report anything for 2026 because that moves over to the facilities fund. And then the, the reduction of headcount is also shifting over to the facilities fund.
Buddy. So just for us, really pretty flat from this year, projection, projected going into next year. We are projecting an increase of 9% over for next year in revenue. Mostly, the last few years I've been a little reluctant and probably over conservative with general admissions and pass sales at the rec center. But we're, we're a couple of years really strong now. So I was less reluctant to bump that number up for next year in, in rec operations area. On the expense side, we did have, we're over 79,000. We had a couple of large. One was gas and electric at the rec, at the ice rink. We expected the solar system to be done a little sooner this year and it just went online a couple of weeks ago. So we're going to be over in gas and electric about 30,000 this year at ICE. We also had, at the Nordic Center, one of the snow cats was giving us a lot of problems. So we ended up shipping it out to Grand Junction. And that was a kind of a $30,000 rebuild, periodic maintenance. So we can get another four or five years out of that machine. So that explains our, where we're a little bit over. Programs revenue wise is, is projecting under not much, $2,500. But I do want to But I do want to highlight the tennis center, Jay, you asked about that in our last meeting. Cost recovery wise, we, we were at sixty four percent in twenty twenty four. We're projecting or sixty six percent, we're projecting eighty four percent this year. Tennis, we've, with new leadership there, it's just grown tremendously. Hundred and forty kids in the summer program at tennis, which is probably why we see a little bit less in programs in the rec center. But everything's, everything's strong. Carol, I wanted to address your fee with Nordic Center. We are at the bottom, we've done some looking into other areas, winter park, steamboat. And we are definitely on the low side, we've had very little pushback with pass sales so far, they're strong right now for this season. So just wanted to get back with you on that one.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Those are our highlights, I guess, for this year, things are great, four hundred thousand people we're serving a year and we love it.
It's great work.
Are those visits, is that like a unique, unique visits?
It's awesome.
It's pretty amazing.
I feel like rec is one of town's crown jewels, like the can, almost can do no wrong. And one of the pieces on that. Pieces of that, I think one of the major drivers of that is the children's programming. What percentage of the burden on whether FTEs or overall expense do, does the children's programs, whether it's after school or summer programming represent?
Well, if you look at, I don't, off the top of my head, FTEs, it's significant, right? Like you walk around and you see the T-shirts of all the program folks on a daily basis. Expense wise, it's, it's the, it's the lowest cost recovery area as far, just programs in general. So it's a significant. You know, all of you and the, the, the vision that you guys, as well as past town councils have had for our children's programs. We, it's, it's a big subsidy, eight hundred thousand dollars just in programs alone. So. But the value that it brings is. You know.
I think, you know, I guess too, my, my point on this is that it's a significant investment that we've chosen to do that. Kind of makes it apples and oranges with other communities from a comparable standpoint. And it's important for the public to realize that it's an investment in our children that's, that we have chosen consciously to make. And so you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Curious, do we have counters on the ball fields? Do we get data from that on visitors?
It's, it's, it's part of our programs visits, just with the various leagues that are happening.
Oh, got it.
It's a little challenging for, you know, outside folks that are coming in to, so those numbers would be higher. Like, let's say there's a lacrosse tournament or we're not capturing those.
Well, I was just more curious about like, what did the turf, what sort of bump did the turf give? It's obviously significant, it's in the weeds, so anyways, just incredible work and thank you.
I don't have the number, but it's significant.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, a lot of use out there.
Yeah.
Just piggybacking on Jay's, I, I want to recognize staff, I mean, those children's programs don't just happen. The other communities struggled to have staff and to staff up quickly enough to, to fill the gaps and really applaud that.
And high quality staff.
High quality, for sure.
My wingman here.
All right, anything else? Thanks, Kevin and John.
Thanks, everyone.
I'll be back.
I did want to just point out, when we look at the rec programs and rec operations expenses. Back at the large, this is where we realigned the aquatics program, so you'll see those expenses kind of shift within those two departments. There was an error in the payroll costing sheets within the rec programs, which is why you're seeing that favorability of a hundred and eighteen thousand. Where we had a member of staff that is currently allocated across multiple departments. Was also captured a hundred percent within this department too, so that was a, an error that was found when we did the payroll costing sheets for this year, so that's been rectified.
Kristen.
Hey, I think Dave might want to go first.
Dave.
Okay, contingencies is one of those other department areas that has multiple cost centers in it. So it has, I don't know why we call it contingencies, but we do. And we have the word miscellaneous up top here, but at the end of the day, it's contingencies really covers. The line share is our property taxes that we collect from the town's perspective. And we also, when we receive money to cover the general fund from the excise fund, we book it to this department one, 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 one as well. And so it's, it's this kind of a placeholder for those types of different activities. We also put in what we give mountain dreamers for the agreement with the county on a, on a lease for a housing unit of thirty thousand a year falls under contingencies as well. And then finally, the county charges us money to do the, the taxes for the property taxes, then that goes there as well. Which is about a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars of expense in twenty twenty, twenty six for that, for that service that they provide. We also have, which our committees are a part of the contingencies, or excuse me, part of the miscellaneous budget summary and our fiber department. So I guess, Shannon, you want me to speak to committees? I guess I can, if you want me to.
I can do it.
Oh, all right.
So regardless, unless you had questions about the contingencies, which is miscellaneous on top of miscellaneous.
Random.
Okay, so internal committees, one of the, one of the important things back to kind of our HR focuses, is that our town culture is really important in how we retain staff. And kind of facilitate, you know, positive work environment and part of that is our, our internal committees that include DEI committee, the green team, the safety committee. Leadership development team, wellness, retirement and employee engagement. The way that works is internal staff members are obviously staffing those committees. A lot of departmental representation across all of those, and then we also have a senior leader attend those meetings to help with those. Every other year, specifically on the leadership development team, every other year, we do an internal kind of leadership. Challenge program in which it's sort of a deep dive into leadership skills and how to develop. Kind of professional development and personal development as well, including a number of activities are listed in there. And then what I think is kind of highlighted, maybe not that well in here because I wrote it, is that we, we also do a number of group projects. Within that leadership challenge program, and so you'll have a, say, a set of three or four employees that take on a task. It's a challenge for us to figure out and they do a, you know, big, you know, SWOT analysis and or SARA analysis and understand what the challenges are and how, how can we approach those? And the idea behind those is both leadership and learning and cooperation across, across departments and divisions. But also hopefully that comes out with a product in terms of a project that can be applied to help address some of the problems and challenges that we face. So in twenty twenty six, that leadership challenge program is back on, so alternating years, you'll see a jump in that number. That's generally what the internal committees look like.
That's great.
Questions?
Questions? Great, thank you.
All right, just want to give everyone a quick update and goals for the fiber program this year. Yesterday I got quarter three results from ALO and we're up to one thousand three hundred and sixty five subscribers, which is a twenty one percent increase over. The twenty twenty four final number and we're still connecting people this year, so wanted to share some statistics. The pro forma that we've presented is that shows a twenty percent increase each year in subscribers. And so with what numbers we got yesterday, that's a twenty one percent increase over yesterday. So we're hoping that we can continue that trend through twenty thirty and beyond of subscribing more than twenty percent per year. So our goal, based on the strategic plan, was to get to a full town take rate of forty percent. And that would mean seven thousand homes passed and three thousand homes connected. So that would get us a take rate of forty percent. And right now with our thirteen hundred homes connected at a twenty percent increase per year, we would be over a three thousand, somewhere between twenty twenty nine and twenty thirty. And to get to that homes passed number, that would put us, if we pass twenty percent more homes per year, that would put us. Over seven thousand somewhere in early twenty twenty seven. So I think that the pro forma is showing, you know, in twenty twenty nine, we'll be in the positive. And if our strategic plan follows, if we follow our strategic plan and connect and pass twenty percent of homes and people per year. Then we should get to that number. Just wanted to say our, our take rate in twenty twenty four was twenty four percent. And right now with these new numbers in twenty twenty five, we're at twenty six point five percent. There are certain neighborhoods that are better, better than others, like the Wellington's at seventy two percent, historic district is at thirty five percent. And then with the capital infrastructure that we've shown in the CIP. In twenty twenty six, our goals are to hit all of the runway development, the BGV finale project, the village at Breck. And then wire the rest of the MDUs on four o'clock road. So I can take any other questions on the fiber project.
That was really helpful, thank you. Questions on fiber?
Great job, that's exciting to hear, we're getting close to break even or going positive. The question, my question is, I saw that ALO had a chunk of revenue from a network lease with Verizon.
Yes.
Is that something that we could do directly or do we have to go through ALO to do that?
We, as part of the renegotiation of our contract, that, that included the dark fiber lease. And that lease with Verizon is part of the dark fiber lease. And that was included in our renegotiation with Alice, so we did have to go through ALO on that.
Okay.
And I'll just add that the original lease agreement is for the whole network. And so. That is the dark fiber to some degree as well, so we, they argued one side, we argued the other side, and that's how we got to sort of this compromise.
Okay. Well, something to continue looking at as we renegotiate these leases over time or these contracts, so. Great job, we're making significant progress, so it's awesome.
Kristen, when you talk about the numbers of subscribers. What happens and how do you count multi-unit development that we run the cable to?
Yeah, that is something that we've been working on with ALO, we have, you know, say that an MDU has twenty five units. A lot of times that's just counted as one kind of. So I've been working with them to figure out a better way to count those connections. If, if it's only one bill, then it only gets counted as one person or one.
Know that may be a one hundred percent project of every unit receives the service.
True, yeah, that's one of my goals this year is to work on how can we better count the number of units in an MDU with only one bill.
Anyway, when we take the expense of running that fiber to a multi-unit. Location that we can demand that everybody signs up?
Well, it all depends on how the contract is between ALO and the apartment, so if it's a bulk contract, then there's only one bill. But if it's an. If, if each individual unit signs up, they, they can do either way when, when an apartment building or condo unit. Signs up for service, they can say, we want everyone in the complex and then it's usually handled by the HOA. Or individual units can sign up if the HOA decides to go that way.
You have a sense as to which path they choose usually?
You know, it really depends on the HOA. The town sees a better return when it's a bulk deal, that means everyone in the whole complex is signed up. And those are the apartment buildings and, and condo units that we've been trying to wire this past year. We'd rather wire the whole building versus, you know, a couple of units in each building.
Thank you.
Anything else on fiber? Thanks, Kristen. I think if it's okay, I think we're just going to take a five minute break, is that fine? Great, I know, I didn't even have to be up.
I just thought that I'd paste my water in since it's hot.
You're wise.
Turn off the clip audio.
Get her jacket. Okay. I think we're all back. So we're continuing on with James, it looks like. But Dave again, or is it Tracy?
It is James.
Natural or anything?
Nope.
All right. Well, next fund up is a utility fund and this one probably doesn't need a lot of, we've been having quite a bit of discussion, I should say, regarding water. Again, this is an enterprise fund, so there is a collection of revenues that, that are then in turn used for the expenses. Again, as we've been discussing, I'll identify a few of the projects that are coming up and included as part of next year's budget for some of those expenses. As stated there on the opening line, this, this division is comprised of 11 full-time staff. And it's really quite amazing the amount of work behind the scenes that goes on in this work group to oversee the, the utility. That being said, we have a number of projects going on right now that are gonna really continue to move our community forward in terms of both sustainability and just conservation of water. I think most folks here are, know that we're doing our AMI, our advanced metering, metering infrastructure project, which another way of saying that is it's a communication network that will allow our folks and the end customers to have more real-time data of their water usage. And again, all that is really, you know, kind of being done with the goal of to have better water conservation moving forward. We also, as part of that, one of the technology innovations and advancements of that metering system will allow us to have better identification of leaks within the system. And specifically, there'll be the ability to know if we have leaks within areas or pressure zones of our system that we then in turn, you know, can address knowing, you know, having that information. Another aspect of that, you know, kind of with our, our systems approach to this utility, we do do yearly a leak detection survey. And we historically have done about a third of the system of the, you know, each year. And that helps us to kind of identify again, some leaks that maybe have been undetected. And, and again, again, with the goal of making sure that we get revenue for that, that water. So that, that's a big part of our program as well. One of the things that I wanted to highlight there, just operationally, while, while there is a 7% decrease in the operation size, there's kind of almost, that shows up almost two times in the capital side of things, because we've just moved a few of the projects out of the upside to the capital side of the budget. I just mentioned one of the, one of the big projects that we're going and undergoing right now and really will come to conclusion next year is that AMI project. Are there projects that we have going or we are gonna be going in and doing some more distribution work with our system out in advance of the Gary Roberts rehabilitation project? And really the efforts of that work is all with the goal to be able to minimize some of the time that we're gonna have to, when we take Gary Roberts offline, when we go ahead and get into that construction period for, for that, that plant work. The other thing that's previously mentioned, Mark mentioned as comm dev, we are participating as, as kind of a requirement, I guess. And also a little bit overdue for us as well is updating our water master plan. And so we'll, we'll be updating our water master plan in conjunction with the comprehensive plan that'll also in turn kind of parlay or, or, or give us the ability, I should say, to update our water efficiency plan as well. And both of those plans are important to get a, a better understanding of where we are currently within our water, our utility and specifically with our water demand. It's been about 10 years since we last looked at our demand. And that was, that time coincided with our going through the feasibility for the second water treatment plant, the Breck North Water Plant. And continued to look at those numbers and it's, it has been interesting that our demand has continued to increase at a rate that I won't say it's alarming, but it's really kind of starting to eclipse some of the, the assumptions that were made even 10 years ago. So it'll be, again, the timing of all this is, is, is good from the sense of just knowing where we are currently and then what we can, what ability the utility has in the going forward for bringing new areas on, whether those are developments or, or other areas for service. The other, the other kind of projects I just wanted to make mention there, we are, we do have some money identified for doing a rate study. We've been discussing that as well. Our goal is to have, you know, get, be nearing the finish line about a year from now. So we're out in front and have the ability to bring back to council for discussion what we'll be recommending for either keeping the, the water rents increases the same or if those need to be adjusted over what they are currently. Another piece in there, we do have $100,000 contribution still that's to be made for the Colorado River District to make the purchase of the Shoshone Water Rights. That, just a quick update on that, that continues to be a pretty contentious discussion between CWCB, Colorado Water Conservation Board, Denver Water, and some of the big utilities in the Front Range. I think the, I think the belief and is still very optimistic that that will, that purchase will get completed. But it's, right now it's set to, the whole deal was intended to be completed by the end of 2026 with XL for the purchase. But I think some of the just initial discussions is, is that may get extended even by XL just because some of the water discussions that are ongoing with that may or may not be completed by the end of 2026. And then the kind of last item in there, again, mentioning, you know, the revenue side of this. A lot of the utility does rely on PIFs. And there will be a decrease associated with the 2026 PIFs as kind of a result of some, not only a delay, but also some of a kind of a decrease in some of the building activities. So those PIFs won't be realized in this first 26 as well. I think I had most of the highlights, but I'd be happy to take any specific questions.
Question for James?
James, I, I loved your narrative. And, you know, when you kind of talked about all the things that you, utility is responsible for from the two drinking water treatment plants and a thousand fire hydrants and all the, you know, thousands of underground valves and I really appreciate that. I think it drives home the importance of the department. The Gary Roberts expense that is coming up, you know, I can only speak for myself, that is something that became an awareness about a year or two ago in, in planning for it. With our aging infrastructure, you know, approaching 60, 70 years old, are there items that we need to be aware of now for 10, 20 years down the road that we should be kind of starting to sock money away like we do with the culverts? With regards and with respect to the infrastructure that is aging?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Jay. That's really hits kind of to a lot of the discussion, discussion of the utility fund and some of the, you know, and I'll let Dave speak to it as well, you know, when we look at those numbers and we do the projections on revenue versus the expenses, we, we have a lot of expenses out there in the future. And to your point, we do put money away for waterline replacements and distribution upgrades and some of that money next year, in addition to the work that's gonna be done in, on the south end of town, we are looking to do another $1.2 million in some upgrades to the north, north water tank and also Ski Hill One Pump Station as well. And some of that kind of speaks to what you're, you're making mention of is that these are just required and kind of necessary upgrades to stay out in front of, of this aging system. But the way, you hit it right on the head, you know, it's a 60-year-old plus system. And it has, we've extended it to kind of, we are pushing it to its maximum useful life. And, you know, while on one hand that's, we're getting our money's worth out of it. On the other hand, it's, it makes it a little bit nerve wracking and, and to get all the, all the maintenance done. And, you know, we've had the Gary Roberts on our, on the, our radar for some time. But the project that really caught us off guard was really in 2016 with the discovery of the, the Goose Pastor Tarn Dam was the one that really kind of messed up the pro forma for a period of years.
James, will we have the rate study prior to taking out the, the debt for the Gary Roberts?
That, that can be a goal of ours, Dick. We certainly, we've been talking with a few people and, and we also have, we also have some software that we use within the utility that kind of does some of that forecasting as well. So we do have an ability to have some of that. We, the advantage of coupling with a consultant is, is that, you know, it kind of gives a third-party review to some of that. So I think to answer the question, I believe we'll have some of that information, whether or not we wanna, you know, we'll have to kind of look at that for how,
Act on it, yeah.
The accuracy of, of acting, yeah.
Second question, this, you may have answered with Jay's question because it's down the same line. Do, do you feel comfortable or will this master plan accomplish this where we actually have a, yeah, pro forma for however many years with a schedule to replace this infrastructure that, that you're comfortable with, without it being so stressful? I, you know, I, I, I know you know this, but I mean, I'm sure some of those pipes, you, you get that useful life, you're also probably losing some water. So. But do you feel like you've got the tools or the, the pro forma to, to, to feel comfortable about the next 20 years? Or should we embark on a study to do that?
I'm gonna say we feel comfortable right now. And I think coupled with some of the information and some of the, you know, kind of this, this investigation that we're gonna, evaluation that we're gonna embark on, I think is gonna help us. You know, one of the, one of the things that I'm continuing to examine as well and I, why this water master plan is, is, is an important, an important piece of information is, is looking at our water portfolio. You know, as kind of, you know, represented or not only represented, but communicated before, we do, the town does have a healthy water portfolio. And while I'm saying that, I think there exists potentially in the future, an ability to, you know, leverage that in some additional sale of, sales of water. As you know, the one that's probably most familiar to folks right now is this, we, we, we have a partner in Ski Area, for instance, and we do sell water to the Ski Area. I would like to, again, kind of wait to, you know, as this study goes on with water master plan and our water efficiency plan to, you know, be looking at the, kind of the summary of that report and look at that in terms of, you know, what we know. you know, what we know additionally about our community and the surrounding areas that are currently out of the service area. But potentially could be, you know, necessary to bring other areas in in the future as well.
And the Ski Area agreement's coming up the next couple of years, as I recall, is that right?
Yeah, we're actually working with them right now. We've developed a new schedule based on another 35-year term. And well, that hasn't been finalized yet. It's I've been working with Keely on that as well in the Ski Area, certainly.
Awesome. Thanks, James. This is a
James, I'm going to follow up with Jay and Dick here a little bit. It seems to me that really getting our water rates right with these huge expenses coming up is going to be a big deal. So I'm glad you have your your eye on that. Is there any need, do you think, because you were discussing the fact that our water usage is going up and up? And it may be a little bit of an alarming rate for some code changes with respect to outdoor water use? I know we have a little bit of that, but where I live, every time a house changes hands, a home moves to a new homeowner, there's a new manicured lawn put in with watering systems. And we, in my area, we're not, they're watering every day, which I think is against the code. Do we need to look at any of that?
I would say that we we continue to look at that. We do have code right now that that has, you know, regulation on days of the week. And, you know, based on your, the address, addressing of your home, you know, which day you can be watering. I think if I had to guess, I think, you know, in what you're describing, it really comes down to enforcement. And we, you know, that's one area that, you know, kind of shows up in a number of places that, you know, is challenging for for us to to be on top of. But I think, you know, again, in conjunction with some of the the plans that we're we're revisiting and updating, I think there'll be some, maybe some common threads that come out of that, maybe some areas that we can kind of further develop into to to better policy or 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 maybe even new policy.
And just finally, I'd like to tell you, if you haven't heard this before, but your contractor that's doing the meter replacement, very efficient, got a text message, call us to schedule it, they scheduled it the next day. Guy came out, was there for 15 minutes, very neat, clean, gone, done, good work.
Well, thank you for that. It's, you know, with every every one of those successes, there's been a few hurdles, so.
The hurdles.
We are, we are moving closer to the to the finish line. I know it, like, as I mentioned earlier, it is going to spill out into to next year's budget. But um, but, you know, we're all excited to get this project completed for a number of reasons.
Contractor did a nice job.
And I've had same experience on a number of different projects. Contractor is good.
Anything else? James, along that same line, as far as, I know that we talk a lot about how healthy the Breck water portfolio is. I guess I'm sort of interested in kind of changing that discussion and talking more about letting people know how much water they're using. I mean, I know that we do that through our billing system, but you do have to click on the link to even go to the other. And so I do think that, you know, at the state they're doing that turf reduction policies and really looking at how to encourage people to not have so much grass. And I mean, I just think that even though we have enough water rights, doesn't mean we should be using that much water. And so while it is some enforcement, I feel like I'd love your input on what is causing the sort of like shocking increase in demand, you know? Is it people watering outside? Is it that we've had more construction? Is it, you know, just to have a really good understanding of that? And then thinking about how we can do the right thing, which is really let people know how much water they're using. And maybe even incentivizing some sort of not turfing your lawn or even, you know, turf buyback or like we would landscape with more drought tolerant grasses or something like that.
Yeah, I think I, there's definitely without, without doubt, there's some opportunities we have, Kelly. And I think, you know, as this, as we do evaluate the water rates, I think that's one of, you know, several tools really that we have. And I think that's probably one area that gets probably the most attention initially, you know, when you start to understand or maybe you look at what your consumption of water is. And again, as mentioned, that AMI project that we got going right now is really intended to, you know, if we do get out in front with some good communication and education, hopefully we can really bring this into, you know, a larger frame of discussion and understanding that, hey, water is a valuable resource and we need to be better stewards of 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 this resource.
I would love that.
I would second Kelly's comments. She said it much more articulately than I did, but that's what I was thinking about.
Noted.
Anything else? Thanks, James.
Yeah, thank you.
So I just wanted to draw your attention to in 2028, we have the potential $31 million debt. Dave and I have run the numbers, kind of play with it with the enterprise, with a utility fund, it is an enterprise fund. So theoretically runs as a single entity. And in order to keep the the fund viable, this, the 31 million is what we anticipate having to fund primarily for the Gary Roberts $50 million investment. And we have also built in the potential loan repayment starting in that year for principal and interest on that 31 million. Then we base it on 4% was the, is what we're anticipating for the interest rate on that loan.
Thanks, Tracy.
And when the time comes up, there will be multiple options available for all of our utility debt. And I'll leave it at that, what we have currently and what we potentially might need going forward. So there's a lot of opportunities. We've already met with a potential lender who would help us with options on that. So I think the good news is we would have things to consider. And and maybe not have to drain other funding if we if if we get to that point. So just that's a, it's debt, I get it, but there are, there's, there's money out there.
Thanks. All right, Shannon.
Good afternoon. Hopefully this won't be too much deja vu as we already had a whole work session dedicated to reviewing the CIP. As the memo describes, the budget and fund through the capital fund is directly related to what projects we choose to move forward. And between '25 and '26, we're decreasing $10 million. And I think that's mostly attributed to the large amount of funding we had for the Broken Lands project this year. We highlight the projects that we are funding for 2026 there in the list. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have before we go into the discussion that we're going to have on the South Park corridor. If there's any questions on the overall income statement on what is attributed to the capital fund.
Questions on that?
On the CIP?
Yeah, but not including the south.
Yeah. Just kind of for me, the aha I got and reading all of this and looking at is we can't afford what we need to do, in my opinion, over time. And so it's kind of a shifting of thinking and and I'm wondering, you know, with your expertise and and I use like the Kingdom Park, you know, the $4 million project that I think we'd all love to do and complete that. But could 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 we save significant dollars by skinning that down significantly? Like just two ADA bathrooms in in the site work to make the site ADA compliant done? You know, not the parking lot, not the any anything else. And with with certainly an approach that could be phased and added on to down the road.
That is the approach we initially took. We wanted to come at it with a million, million and a half, get some grading done, upgrade the bathrooms where we could. But what we discovered is the bathrooms needed a complete demo and rebuild. And code does dictate the size of those restrooms that we need based on occupancy of the ball fields. So there isn't a real simple way to just do part of the project. And we could save a few dollars, we could cut out the shade shelter, we could maybe cut the finishes down, maybe with some less concrete area. But I don't think it's going to be the significant savings that we're hoping for.
So it's basically $4 million for site work and bathrooms.
And a little bit of signage. We don't have much going on in the parking lot in that project.
Yeah, I'd love to, if there's any value engineering to be done or any opportunity, even if we save $500,000, it's worth it in my mind.
Absolutely.
I just think we're going to have to make some hard decisions going forward.
We are going to have another refresh and look at that design based on, you know, some of Todd's comments and ideas based on this feedback and see how we can tweak that to make it the right fit.
Awesome.
And if we can save 500, let's do that. And we always want to do that. I try to put in sort of worst case scenario budgets. We generally end up with savings on our capital projects that we either roll over to another one or return to X size. But I hate under budgeting and
Sure.
asking for another million to complete a project that really isn't our philosophy in the capital fund. So absolutely.
I'm more asking from a design standpoint.
Yeah. John Doherty, I decided to talk with him, he's going to help us look at that refresh and give some new ideas before we move forward with construction.
Is there something that we do that, like the concrete restrooms, is that what's so expensive? Or can you just describe a little bit how that could be that expensive? I just guess I don't understand.
We want to build a nice product. I don't think we're ever overbuilding, going Cadillac. But, you know, we want a nice Prius that's going to last. We could really trim down and do a more basic finish for the bathroom, sort of more what Silverthorn does in theirs where it's bathrooms you can hose down and call it good and it's concrete cinder block look on the outside. That hasn't typically been the architecture we like.
Is that like our wrecked? The soccer one, field ones?
Yeah, a little bit more like that. So, yeah, we could save a couple of dollars if we want to go a little bit lower finish, but we we don't want to go too low because we want it to last.
And then the concrete area is obviously a big driver as well.
It is. We have to do a lot of that grading anyway to get ADA through there. We are widening it enough for it to be a bike connection, which is really important. And we also wanted a, like a flexible space to do the tents, to do the snack sales and to have enough congregating room. Because there are a lot of spectators that need that space. So if we flip it to something a little bit less expensive dirt or grass, I don't know if that's going to be a great multi-season product. That concrete really allows us to maintain it through the winter, which I think is a big piece of this from a pet safety and a extension of season for the turf fields.
That's why we did it partially. Interesting. Thanks for that. Anything else on the CIP?
Not, not at this point, I don't think.
Yeah, I think, I think something that we've just been thinking a lot about is we absolutely want to provide the quality and we don't, we certainly don't want to be building things that we're tearing down to, you know, five years later, when we feel like we have a little more money. But I do think, you know, we're all interested in having that conversation of how we can still provide a great product, but maybe it's not like the best of the best of the best.
We'll look at that. We'll see what we can trim back, you know? I think $500,000 shrink of the budget is achievable. I don't think we can shave off multi-millions and still do the project.
Yep, understood. Okay. Okay, I think we're ready for the south.
Okay. I heard we want to talk about South Park roundabouts. As I detailed a bit in the memo, I won't say detailed, as I pointed to in the memo, back in 2017, we did a really big study. We looked at how that corridor, Park Ave corridor would function with a roundabout at each intersection. We did, you know, robust traffic counts. We put together a really great model and we and we studied what was happening out there. That report gave a hierarchy of where we could get the most bang for our buck on these projects to relieve congestion and to have increased throughput on that corridor. And we've done a couple of them. We've done Watson. That was a really key one for transit and that functions beautifully. French is coming online with the BGB development, which will help a lot with that North Gondola. The other priority was South Park Avenue area. And what was found in that study is it really wasn't one roundabout that got us any improvements. It was two roundabouts, one at Village, one at South Park, as well as controlling the pedestrians. That mid-block pedestrian crossing at Village Hotel is one of the biggest drivers to our congestion. Which was a bit of a surprise back then, but it really shouldn't be. Those pedestrians get to cross whenever they want, other than when we have uniformed officers trying to help with that. So if we want to look at improvements there, it's sort of a package deal, per that last study in report. Of course, we could look at doing separate projects. And that's absolutely feasible, but I just want to make sure council understands that it's really more of a systems approach down there than individual roundabouts.
Can you also talk about, I I feel like there've, over the years that I've been on council, been some different understandings of like, if there's space, if we would need to acquire land, can you talk about some of the constraints down there to just implementing the 2017 study?
We, you know, we did a very high level geometry fit there. And at South Park, we take more right of way, there is a wide right right of way towards the Seema Mall. So that's, that's where the footprint can go. And what that does, that puts the highway a little bit closer to that outdoor dining and that pedestrian connectivity, that could be problematic. Back in 2017, CDOT was just running into some parameters and planning changes that took into account proximity to outdoor dining. So that was a bit of a heads up that they gave us back then. But I think that's our biggest space constraint. I think managing pedestrians at that roundabout is going to be something CDOT really will want to look into. Our pedestrian load, not only at Village, but also at South Park in Maine, is extremely high at times. Does that help, Kelly?
Yeah.
Shannon, can you talk about your own, your opinion in 2017 or parking and planned development was a little bit different? Do you think there's been any changes that would impact the study or the findings or the solutions? Do you still consider that study up to date? Or should we even look at that before we consider solutions?
You read my mind. I think the logic is still solid, but we, it would be awesome to do a data refresh on all the traffic study and the pedestrian counts to see if those findings are still true today. Have there been a lot of changes? Is traffic coming from the south impacting flow differently? Is our pedestrian volume lower? So I think step one, if we do want to prioritize this project a little bit more than it's currently prioritized, would be to collect that data.
I wonder too if it's worth looking at improving that pedestrian corridor. And I've certainly seen places where they would have basically, you know, a crosswalk there that you go when it's red at Highway 9 so that it doesn't, like, does that help solve the flow? Because I I agree with you on the the value of that, you know, it's it's just the congestion and getting through town efficiently. And it's like, if there's a low cost way to, does that give us like an incremental improvement by? And it's like, if there's a low cost way to, does that give us like an incremental improvement by fixing pedestrian, not allowing that to walk at any time you want?
Are you thinking like a pedestrian signal there?
Yeah, pedestrian signal connected to the red light on Main so that when traffic stops, then people go.
Yeah, that is part of the recommendations. They're generally called a Hawk signal, pedestrian hybrid beacon. Um, our CDOT region was very cold on that idea back in twenty seventeen. But I would love to approach them again. And if we could get the pedestrians in the cars to listen to that intermediary signal. It would be a great benefit to traffic flow.
Yeah, and then maybe we see how we're doing and hopefully that's less than twelve mil.
I would think so. But again, we want to get that data. I think doing a data refresh as the first step.
Yeah.
Would be great. And then we can, you know, really understand what are we dealing with? What is our problem? What are we solving for? And then if we still want to take the next step, then start into a feasibility and constructability look to see, is this a viable project right now?
Yeah.
That would be my recommended approach.
Can I, oh, go ahead.
It's interesting thinking about like a round, two roundabouts there, like that's in some ways going to create some pedestrian issues at the main park intersection. Like almost similar to what we have at Silver Shekel, right? Where it's like the safety issue there, so.
When do people go?
Yeah, so like, how do we get it better with lower cost and?
And could the parking study or could the traffic study also take into consideration parking? Because I feel like we've now had several conversations about how the ice rink, you know, is a great reservoir of parking. But it's also pretty much maxed out at this point. And so what do we do with all those cars coming in from the south anyway? I mean, my, I'm really wondering, like, do we want all those cars coming in through town, through the roundabouts? Or is there some way to get them off the road before they even all come in? I guess I'm just wondering about.
We could layer that in. We could have different assumptions in the model. Say we're parking two hundred cars. I don't know what we really park there. At Ice Rink, what would happen if we parked eight hundred? Does that relieve?
And could we? I mean, would that even make sense? Is there that level of traffic that desire that option?
Yeah. And again, what is that traffic pattern we're solving for? We've generally considered our peak afternoon. Heading to the south, southbound movement as what backs us up and causes congestion. But maybe there's a northbound component we're not tuned into.
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, I just think of what I hear a lot is people coming into town in the mornings. That they will be trying to get into town for forty minutes and way backed up into Blue River. So I do think it's a both way issue at a different time of day, opposite in loading and outloading.
Yeah, you think the AM peak might be.
Yeah.
Higher than when we studied it previously.
I think so. It feels like with Colorado Springs just getting so much bigger, I think there.
I know, and the weekends, just anecdotally living in Blue River for a long time.
Yeah.
Weekend mornings were tough.
A real challenge. That's what we hear a lot.
Yeah, I hear it a lot and I. I'm the one who's pushing and feeling a real urgency, you know, as we see our sales tax collections. Drop, you know, which states that the business community's sales are dropping. A lot of the data speaks to congestion, I seventy, of course, which we can't control. But we can't control the south entry a little more. Um, with with starting the studies, you know, I mean, there's no magic. It it's big dollars, right? Um, so I'd be very supportive of a data refresh. And Kelly hit on a point I I'm very intrigued by, which is increasing the parking reservoir at the ice rink. And who knows, something crazy, like maybe we roundabout, um, Boris Pass and. Try to pull them off before they even get to park. Um, you know, I think that reservoir, you know, it's got the fastest growing market in the state in Colorado Springs coming. We're the closest resort to Colorado Springs. So we've got all the guests. We know we have a large employee. Um, population that lives south. We also have a fairly large employee. Um, reservoir, um, to the east as well. And I think we could capture a lot of the the employee parking coming from the east and the south easily in the ice rink. Uh, properly done. And so to to do a data refresh probably is the smartest first step. But, um, you know, I don't know if the rest of council, I'm feeling a tremendous urgency to get this started. I I see some opportunity for collaboration with this area who's moving fast on a gondola at the south end of town. And we know with that gondola will come redevelopment. Um, I I I'm just feeling a tremendous urgency. I don't know if anyone else up here is. But, um, I I think our. Our community needs it, our business community needs it. I think our citizens, our workforce need it and our guests need it. So. It's my best pitch.
I think the thing that would really help us feel like. We're doing everything we can at the pace we can is to make sure that we're talking with Fail Resorts and Main Street Station. And the other property owners down at that end of town who, um, both have an interest and just, we may need to partner with over the long term. And so I do think having this discussion. Really out in the open, but then also maybe just, you know, some pointed conversations with them to make sure that. Fail's not doing something that we wish we had known about and been a part of, you know? I mean, I don't know, maybe we can put a gondola to the ice rink.
Adjacent stakeholder engagement early on, so we're accounting for everything. When you say urgent. What what does urgent mean to us? Is this something council wants to advance? And reshuffle CIP in twenty twenty six? Is this something we're starting and if we're going forward?
And you're.
Positions of a traffic study, like, we're talking about a hundred and fifty or fif- oh.
Two fifty?
I would go out to RFP, but I I think it would be two fifty to five hundred if we're looking at those three intersections now, including Boreas. And if we want to study different scenarios with parking, I I think we could be getting up there. The roundabout modeling is a little bit complex.
Would that include bringing CDOT into the conversation at that point? Or is that afterwards that CDOT would be brought in?
They would be brought in after data collection as a stakeholder, probably. I wouldn't want to get too far along solving problems if they weren't on board.
I would be in favor with moving forward with the study at this point for next year and trying to figure out how to. How to shoehorn that in, uh, just so that we have an understanding of what the forces are and what we need to look at. And the fact is that we're not going to be able to do it on our own. We're not need s- someone to be in with us. And so the sooner we can get the information, probably the better.
I agree with Jay and I would just add, um, that there's an opportunity to see if CDOT's any warmer to that pedestrian crossing.
I feel like it's a little bit. Just off putting that CDOT says they can't help us manage traffic at Fairview, but we want to manage traffic and they won't let us. That just seems like, can we tie them together? Like, hey, we'll help you with this. I don't know. I just can't. It's just really, yeah, it's like they don't want to let us do anything, but they also don't want to participate, which it seems crazy. But.
It is really a challenge to have, you know, State Highway coming through your town. We'll do our best to partner with them. Okay, so we're comfortable with a budget increase possibly in twenty twenty six? Are we comfortable with delaying some projects in twenty twen- six and twenty twenty seven? To both cover us financially and from a staff resource perspective? If you don't want to have that conversation now, we can have it at a different time.
Do you have any recommendations?
It it's been a little tough for me to consider what we would push. A lot of our projects are more in the critical infrastructure rather than, you know. Nice to haves.
I guess I would bring up, uh, Pond Park Planning, Bus Barn Design, Sidewalk Master Plan implementation would be three that.
Sidewalk Master Plan was on my list, Jay. Um, I didn't really think about Pond Park. That wouldn't, that's a decent one. Um, I reluctantly offer some twenty twenty seven Blue River Pathways projects. If we could reduce that load in twenty twenty seven, that could free up staff to concentrate a bit on. Moving the study forward. I think twenty twenty six is more data and a little bit less staff intensive. But as we start engaging stakeholders and problem solving, more in twenty twenty seven, I think we need to free up. There.
Maybe we can now decide on something for next year and then twenty seven, we can give another later date.
Well played, sure. Any other council members have thoughts on that ponderance of shuffling things?
I mean, I guess I would say I'd agree with all three of Jay's before the Blue River Pathways one.
Those are twenty twenty six projects, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on that train as well, but it's also why I asked for twenty five years on the Blue River Pathway, so.
So only, oh, only thing to mention on Jay's suggestion is the bus bar.
Of that one.
Is an important, because we don't, we're not gonna have enough room for all of our buses. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch that one.
amended.
Thank you.
On Pond Park and Sidewalk Master Plan for now, and we'll come to bat in twenty twenty seven on how we want that to be prioritized.
I mean, Shannon, if if it's staff time that you're concerned about, I'd love for you to bring suggestions. But, um, I I I really believe this piece of it that really starts the process of trying to find a just. Trying to find a solution, find partners, et cetera. Is is one of the more urgent projects that we have to do, in my opinion. I I just, with with what's coming in the next three or four years and and the state of of. The south portal to town now, um, I think we would be remiss to not figure out a way to do this. I don't think we can raise the budget is also my opinion. But I don't know if others share. I think the budgets stretch maybe further than I'm comfortable with now, so.
I believe, I I hear you. And there's no harm in planning and starting to have an understanding because this.
Yeah.
This is one of those large infrastructure projects that are many years out. For us to come informed and prepared, I think it's a smart strategy.
Right.
Okay, any other questions on Fund Three for today?
Thanks, Shannon.
Thanks, Shannon.
Through that. So I'll be sure to work with Shannon to get those updates that will be reflected in, uh, the pro forma for those changes on the projects that we discussed.
Um, before Helen kicks off marketing, I just want to point out that I sent you all the ballot language associated with the marketing fund. I think there was some question around what can we, what we can use that money for? And it is for marketing, um, and educating people about the town. So you'll see that in the the language. It's very broad. Um, and for the public, we, um, should have a few copies of that ballot language up on the table if anybody's curious to look at it.
So the marketing fund, um, obviously mine is just a portion of it and Lucy has the bulk of the marketing fund. She'll speak to it in a moment. Um, we are essentially holding steady with our, what we had budgeted for twenty twenty five. You know, um, we took a hard look at contracts for twenty twenty six and we are not seeing at this time any significant increases in what we typically do. Um, that said, we do intend to continue to adjust our marketing strategies and approaches. Um, with the goal to really reach people where they are and, um. Consider some different types of approaches than what we've done in the past. Um, some of the things that we are, have recently rolled out, um, some small group meetings, community forums. Um, attending events more than we have in the past, um, really kind of reaching people on a more personal level. As well as, um, changing a little bit of our approach with our social media, trying to be more fun, as you know. Um, and looking at different strategies across the board. So, um, all of that said, you know, we have a very minor increase, which is really, the bulk of it is for, um. Some additional photography because we're about ten years overdue in some of our stock images. Um, but that's it. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Is this line item used mostly for like in-town marketing? Like, like to citizens and community members?
Correct. So that is, that is kind of the purpose of the department or the division is to market to, um, everyone in our community. So that is everyone from visitors who are here, when they're here. Um, residents and part-time residents. Um, and anyone, like, the idea is once they come into Breckenridge, they are under our charge. Um, a couple of other things I wanted to point out, we are looking at expanding our text messaging capabilities through the City Bot Chat Bot. I know we've mentioned that, but we do hope that in capturing more subscribers, we'll have better metrics for you and who is paying attention to our messages. And, um, and then just our, um, oh, and surveys. We do plan to roll out some kind of survey next year that will hopefully, um, capture how people are seeing our information. Um, and and what they would prefer to see that, um, information in, what kind of strategy works best.
Helen, I'm really like pleased to hear, um, what you said. And I just, I guess, for transparency for others and for generations after you is, you know, in our goal one. In the beginning of the packet where it says, explore and create diverse avenues to deliver consistent information and opportunities for dialogue. I I would just ask that we thread in to residents and part-time residents in there. As you said, it's assumed, I would just love it to be a little bit more overt so that, uh, we're all on the same page. That that's what the division is, is that we are trying to reach our residents, our part-time residents and communicate with them.
Yeah, we we certainly want them to feel included in the messaging and so we can change that wording to specify that directly.
It's kind of semantics, but.
No, I I think it makes sense. I mean, it's something we've talked about a lot.
Okay, anything else for Helen? Thanks, Helen.
Thank you. Oh, um, so could, just a couple of things. One, you have, uh, the BTO's memo in the packet. We weren't going to have Lucy come down, but she's obviously here if you have any questions for her. Um, and then the other point is we do have a question that has, um, I know there's been some conversation about. One, whether or not we should be funding our communications work out of the marketing fund. Um, and then us, there was a suggestion that maybe we split that cost. So some of it comes out of marketing and some of it comes out of the general fund. So we need to have a discussion about that as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Do you want to kick us off?
Pardon me?
Do you want to kick up?
Sure.
Part of the discussion off?
I mean, I'm, uh, I'm all for splitting it. I'll I'll be brief. I'm I'm in favor of, uh, splitting it between the two funds.
Did everyone see what, um, Shannon was referring to that she sent us the text?
And I agree, because I think a lot of work that Helen and team does, like, I think the dark sky is a perfect example where. where it's communications to community members, but it had that much broader impact to market the town, so I agree with Dick. I think splitting it makes sense.
I think this fund is seeing, you know, I think it is in twenty thirty, it goes upside down where our expenses as they go are going to exceed the revenue and the reserves that it has, and so I think it is prudent to address this now and just to try to preserve the fund for what the ballot language was, which the last couple of words or a couple of sentence was to be used only to market and advertise the town. And to use that line as a litmus test on whether it is appropriate to use comm and what portions of the of communications to take from this, this fund. Because this is really something that was produced from the lodging community on the backs of lodging to help promote the town and advertise the town.
And are you suggesting to split, or are you suggesting to take it?
I think it makes sense to not just have an arbitrary percentage split, but to look at what portions of communications, if, you know, I think we have three and a half FTEs are dedicated to market and advertise the town and to use that percentage.
So just from an accounting perspective, my recommendation, if we do want to split it, is that the actual collateral, the money that we pay to push material out, that that's what we would use the marketing fund dollars for and that the sort of administration and staffing, we would keep within the town budget. Just because, as Tracy pointed out, we ran into problems with the rec budget when you're allocating part of someone somewhere or part of a department somewhere, it just gets really messy. So, but I see your point. I think if we are paying for the the tangible communication piece of it, then I think it fits what you're suggesting.
I'd be all for that.
Okay, thank you.
I have an adjacent question, so if you want to, I mean, I, in my, I I tried to read the memos very carefully, so I apologize if I just missed it or misunderstood it, but it seems like our team is responsible for people in town, like, once they get within our perimeter. And I feel like if I read the BTO memo correctly, they're doing mostly out-of-state marketing. I thought that the BCA memo said this, like, I'm wondering who's doing Colorado state marketing? Because that does seem to be a place where we're losing bed nights, and I just didn't know how marketing was done, like beyond Breckenridge, but in the state of Colorado.
I mean, it's a good, good question, Marika. I obviously, the the ski company does a tremendous amount of marketing down on the front range. I think all of the lodging community does a tremendous amount of marketing on the front range and all over the state. When the BTO was funded, it it was really contemplated that you know, the destination, destination marketing, the destination guest has a longer stay, has a larger spend, and is more expensive to market to. So valuable to this market. They also don't drive cars as often, don't, you know, the everybody coming to the front range is bringing a car, etc.
Yeah, I want to be clear, I'm not questioning, like, how we're doing all of that. I was just wondering if there was a pointed effort with
So that's kind of a, you know, we've always felt comfortable that there's now, now Lucy, the BTO. There's a bit of a shift with some PR efforts and some, some other efforts that, you know, I think she touched on in the memo that are more in-state and and front range, so I, there is a bit of a shift, but I think historically, and Jay, Jay's got a lot of experience with BTO, he, I'll let, yeah, I may jump in, please. You know, I think historically, we felt that in-state's pretty well covered, but certainly that's a it's a market share that we seem to be missing some, so it's, it's a, it's a great question, I think, so.
I think you nailed it a hundred percent.
But on the BCA piece, any marketing they do in-state would be art-specific.
And there are some, some situations where we do market to the front range with our messages, and they're mostly race Brek. We, we pay for ads on front-range publications and in front-range geo-fencing in social media specific to our racing. And that's, or I guess some of our events, the events that the town runs, not the ones that the
Vacation for Helen's communications piece to, to, you know, for a few hundred thousand dollars of of the efforts to go to the marketing fund, because they are enhancing the brand of Breckenridge. And and that is critical to destination marketing, so I'll leave it at that general statement. So I think there is justification. I don't think there's justification for a hundred percent of it. But I do think there's justification for a portion of it, and I suggested fifty percent out of ease of accounting. So, but I like your approach, Shannon.
Yeah, I like the split. I like easy accounting, and then similar to Marika, and I like the direction her question was going. You know, I'm curious, like, as we hear from, you know, BCA and the Partner Arts organizations, and certainly can only imagine the lift at Rec on advertising, you know, all the things they're doing. It's like, is there an opportunity there with more help for the marketing team? You know, it's, it's, I think a lot of those activities and currently the way the arts are structured, it's, it's really set up for folks once they're here. It's not to drive destination visitation at the moment. It's like, is there an opportunity to, you know, maybe add to what you're doing and help those organizations be a little more successful? Can we do that within this framework? And probably a discussion for a later date, but just a thought as we're working on, you know, I, I think through like the BTO, it's like, well, a lot of the art stuff's too deep in the funnel to be, that's not what they're doing, and then it's like, you know, these arts entities are putting together the programming, and like, can we help them? Guess would be the question.
It's a great question.
And if, if I said BCA, I meant BTO, so.
Anything else?
I'm in favor of reallocation.
Thanks, Helen.
So I, just to confirm to make sure what we would do within the, where's my mouse? Oh, this mouse. Expenses of eight hundred and fifty-three, if I consider what's actually contained within there, all but about three hundred and eight thousand, which is just for advertising, marketing, consultants, I believe would stay within the marketing fund. The remaining five hundred and thirty odd thousand would then move over as expected, which is really to do with staffing, materials and supplies, employee development, liability insurance, things like that are more personnel-based over to the general fund. And I'd start that for twenty-six moving forward, and we can decide afterwards where you would want that, which department would own that.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, golf fund.
Yeah, golf, nothing but highlights again this year, which is awesome. So Grant, when he put together the memo that you all have, he was using the, the projections in here, and we made these projections back in July. I actually ran numbers this morning for this update, and Grant's four hundred and twenty-four thousand over budget and revenue is actually about eight hundred and fifty thousand now.
Yes.
So I'm significant, a very significant and good last half of the, of the summer. I think two things, our course conditions are better than anyplace else in the area. They're better than a lot of golf courses anywhere. And then we had very few rainouts as well, so the golf fund is, is very healthy, and I'm happy to report that. I'm glad I ran those numbers this morning, so. We are wrapping up a few projects right now. I think it was springtime when you all approved the, the fencing in the driving range that finished yesterday. You guys approved four hundred and fifty feet of fence. I promised that it would be less than that, and it's three hundred and fifty feet, so. That was done yesterday. I've not seen it yet, but I've heard it's awesome. Car path on Bear is done, that's complete. Right now, we have the front stair project going on, so that's getting redone. Getting demoed this week and then should be done by the end of the month. Couple highlights for next year, we're, we're right now planning to redo the deck at the, at clubhouse. It kind of goes, as you all know, it goes pretty far out to the water's edge. We're going to bring that back and then extend it to the north. So there will be more like waterfront seating, so that's one of our projects for next year. And that's about it. Other, some other small projects, but overall fantastic year.
That won't be done for pond hockey?
No, it won't be done for pond hockey. Twenty-two six pond hockey.
Any other questions? Did you also do the fence at the, to shield the solar?
Yes, that was done at the beginning of the summer. That was done before we opened, yep. Significant improvement on, no, no car damage, no, no maintenance shed damage, so that's, yeah. And we'll, and as part of that driving range, we also have money in the budget for next year to improve the landscaping on the east. Yeah, the right side of the
South. That sounds great.
Looks great on the bear. They did an outstanding job on that.
Makes a difference.
All right, thank you. Excise Fund, Pam.
Good afternoon. As Dick mentioned, the excise fund really is that engine that supports, you know, the wide range of town investments and activities and services. Revenues for these funds include accommodations tax, real estate transfer tax, sales tax, franchise fees, and other excise-related revenues. These revenues help support our debt services, major transfers to town funds and major community investments. Our revenues proposed for twenty twenty-six are forty-seven point two millions, which is a decrease of two point eight million. This is mainly driven by a three percent reduction in our sales tax in comparison with our twenty twenty-five projection. Half a million dollars reduction on investment income. All of these based on current trends, as well as the fact that our real estate transfer tax is budgeted at six million, which is consistent with the long-term averages and compared to the height twenty twenty-five projection. Our expenditures are proposed at forty-two point three million, which is down eight point eight from twenty twenty-five budget. This reduction is largely driven by decreased transfers to our general fund, our capital fund, facilities fund, and sustainability fund, and an increased transfer to housing and special projects. The major budget drivers for this fund include a very conservative sales tax projections, given the economic trends that we have been seeing, and continued ongoing support for housing, transportation, capital project, project, sustainability, all which align with our council's strategic priorities. Do you have any questions?
I, I have two comments. One, on twenty twenty-four, it, it hit me. There was an audit fund balance change made for twenty-four, which is about three million. So if you take that out, we're at about five percent from twenty-four. That, that fifteen was even bugging me, but that's, that's why that's higher, but not in reality. It's more of an accounting thing, and that's where it went. And the other change we did make this year is we did include runway in the restriction in the excise fund. You know, we do three-year CIP. Since runway is the material, we, we kind of took housing out of their Fund Three a couple of years, few years back and moved it in into its own fund, because it was getting crazy, all the transfers happening between. But we did want to capture that in the restriction for runway. That's why there's a jump to fifty-seven million, because we're capturing the, the three-year impact of the project runway, because and we didn't do it in the housing fund. It just would have created a excise transfer, which we really didn't really want to do, but we wanted to capture that restriction. Just kind of lowers the availability of a fund balance, so it's a, that's a good practice to put in for a project that size. So that's the spike you, you do see there. So we're down, this year, call it five percent, next year, three percent in sales tax, which is a downward trend, for sure.
That's helpful. Are there any questions?
Comment, if you're ready for those.
Ready.
Thanks for the clarification, Dave. That makes me feel better. I, I I, I do still feel an urgency and a need to do what we can to really to try to bolster the revenue side. I mean, I think the budget's tight, and as we all see, particularly the operating side, you know, our, our peers, our operating expenses are eclipsing our operating income, which means our cash flow is going backwards, and it's always concerning for for me, anyway, or anyone in business, so. My first approach is always, let's see what we can do to bolster the, the revenue side, and you know, we've, we've heard from some businesses, you know, some frustrations and such and concerns, and they, you know, I think would like to see some efforts around events and just kind of liven the brand. I, I'm with Lucy. I'm very bullish on Breckenridge. I think our brand is strong. You know, I think, I think we can come out, but I think we're gonna have to make some investments and and I brought this up, I believe, at the last meeting, but I don't know if now's the right time or not, but you know, I think we should, I would love to see us earmark two or three hundred thousand dollars to collaborate and partner with the ski company. The ski company's already stated that they plan to bring more events to town this winter and to animate town and to connect town with their resort more, and so to have some funds earmarked to collaborate with them in some of these efforts, along with other partners that might present themselves around events to, to to, to liven the brand, liven the, the business sector a bit and bringing people to town. We saw how successful the farmer's market and the, the music. Unfortunately, we didn't have music for a chunk of the summer during the farmer's market, so to be able to, to, to emulate those type efforts and, and bring people to town and and to bolster sales for our business community, which clearly, if you adjust for inflation, is the sales are down in our business community, which is the engine, the revenue engine of the operating side of our budget, it's sales tax. And so I, I present that. I don't know when we talk about where it comes from, but I would, I, I'll throw it on the table for discussion and step back.
If you, I think it's fine for you all to talk about it now. We'd find a place where it was most appropriate to put the money. Wouldn't be here necessarily, but if you want to talk about it now instead of tabling it for later.
Where would it go?
Well, we could, we'll figure out where it should go.
Where it would come from, yeah.
Yeah, where it would come from, where it would live in the budget, but I think it's totally fine for you all to talk about it now.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking a couple hundred thousand with the event collaboration, and then maybe a hundred thousand. I, I, I haven't gotten definitive support or, or rejection on. I, I'd love to see us move Pele to the water plant and to create a pop-up stage right there where Pele is. Simple, I'm not talking about anything other than put in electricity, but, but I think when we explored moving Pele before, we, we, the number scared us. And it's gonna scare us again, and I would like to make the investment, because I think that we saw in the arts study from our, from our community that they really want more of those family-friendly pop-up type engagement events. And this would be a perfect location. It would be inexpensive to produce events there. Hopefully we could have a producer of the events that's nimble, that, that can do things quickly and, you know, so I, I'd like to see a, a chunk of it go to collaboration on more events and animation for this winter and a piece of it to make the investment to create another, because we've seen how successful Barney Ford has been as that type venue. And let's create another right in the center of town.
Thoughts?
Dick, I think those are great points and I agree with you on all of them and exploring those possibilities, especially to create more family-friendly venues where we can have pop-ups to be a willing partner to support certain activations. But I guess my question comes from the same discussion we had on earmarking that new hundred fifty on the town council budget item is, do we really need to set aside that money? Or can we just make a clear statement or expression to our potential partners that we'd be willing to go in with them?
I feel like we do because the ski area has already expressed interest in partnering and they've asked, are you in with money or not? So this would give us the opportunity to say yes, we're, we're in with some money and, and really work with, with Lucy and our event producers and, and collaborate around that type thing. So I, for me, it would, the answer to your question would be yes, but you know, we'll see how others feel.
Yeah, I support that direction, Dick. In fact, I, I think the dollar amounts, in my opinion, are a little light. I think, you know, as, as we think through like Kelly's sustainability goals, and I think us driving the sales tax and the revenue, that's going to give us the opportunity to do more exploratory and do more work on the sustainability front. So I think that investment, strong investment upfront, steady investment is, is really valuable. You know, one of the things I keep thinking about with BCA is, you know, their charge for a long time has been, hey, entertain folks when they get here and do we, you know, prior to the cultural arts and cultural master plan, do we, do we pivot that? You know, do we change that? And is there, are there some funds there that would help us on this kind of bigger destination? More impactful, a little, you know, little firmer investment in driving that revenue. So, yeah, on board. Think the number should be bigger.
Marika from.
I agree. I mean, I can think of one, one event that we are considering in December that's going to take a big collaboration and having just a little bit of extra cash inflow would help make sure we make a great event in a time that otherwise would be a lower revenue time for, for town. And for a pretty small investment, I think we could do a lot of good. And I would like it as a line item that we know, know the amount and know what we have spent to date.
Agree to piggyback on the, the line item piece. I think that's important. So the skier knows that we're, we're in.
And I'll just add a little bit to Marika's comment. One of the things that we, she and I have talked about, and we've had internal conversations is as we, you know, we're trying to bulk up, say, December with a lot of events and we also have to plow snow and shovel sidewalks and do all the things. And public works is a big part of successfully putting on these events. And we can't, they're really out of bandwidth. And so having some extra funds that can go towards these events where we might otherwise look internally will be very helpful.
So you mean we could contract some of something?
I think we'd have to.
Rather than doing it.
Right, we would have to on some of those.
That's really important.
Yeah, that's.
To not burn out in December.
Let's hope we need it in December, right?
Right, yeah.
What Marika said in mind, supporting public works, the other potential events, do you have a number that you'd suggest we consider?
I don't. And I, you know, I think that if you set a number and it's, and another great opportunity comes your way, we'll bring it back to you to, to add additional funds. I don't know that we know, and Dick may have been in, or Marika may have been in more of these conversations than I've been in. I don't know exactly besides December, what might, what might be coming down the pike.
Did anyone suggest any places that, did I miss where we're taking this money from or we just haven't?
We just want to spend it. We don't know. We don't know.
Okay.
He was like, spend it.
No, I, it's, it's not going to be an easy task, but I, you know, I, I think Sharon was asking to give the staff some time to, to really study it and find some options for us because I don't want to, I don't want to make any connotation that this is going to be an easy find. No dollars are easy finds in this budget and, and, but I, you know, we, we might have to feel some pain somewhere else to feel the gain for this. I, I just, I, I see these sales tax dollars and I think of the, the, the small business community on Main Street that makes our community and our town and our brand what it is. And I, I just feel like we have to react. We can't just say, you know.
I don't think anyone's saying that. I just was curious. I think everybody agrees with all the statements that you've made. And I think my, my curiosity is just where it's going to go.
No, I, it, it's going to be a challenge and I think it's appropriate for the staff to really look at it and bring, bring options back for us.
I would say I'm, I'm a, by nature, a risk averse person, so I'm not a spend money to make money kind of person. But I think that is the reality of what we're talking about here. And we do have, we do have money. So I don't think you need to necessarily cut something in order to put some money towards this. We'll have money that we can put towards this. And if it all pays out, then we'll have additional revenue that will help cover us going forward.
And I do encourage all of council, I think everybody knows, but a week from yesterday, Monday at, at the twentieth at eleven o'clock in the morning, Kelly has had taken the initiative to have a, a business, business community meeting with the mayor and all of council, hopefully like a coffee talk at Luigi's Pizza, and they're going to provide some pizza and, and I plan to be there and I hope we all of council can be there and to actually support the business community and be there and hear their thoughts and concerns.
All right. So it sounds like, oh, Steve, did you want to?
We were just waiting till the end. I support the, the concept. I support a line item again, because I think that announces in our budget what our intention is. And I thought Todd's suggestion of funding it with two fifty is reasonable.
I guess, and I might have missed this, but I was curious about clarification on the purpose of the funds. And it is, is it majority to support the producers, to support public works and to kind of assist on the backend? Or is it to pilot and to have some, one of our, our partners or one of our staff go out and like produce an event and bring for something new?
I, I think the immediate opportunities are to collaborate with existing events, the ski area for one. That's our most immediate opportunity, which there's an opportunity immediately to collaborate with them on some events, bring some of their existing, some events they're working on in, you know, on, up at the area into town.
I just want to be careful not just to cut their expenses by, by subsidizing what they're going to do and just cutting their expenses. I want it to be something that would be new and, or not even new, but expanded and produce additional benefit to the town versus just.
I can give a one example of like the December event. So the Rail Jam that the ski area wants to produce will have a major component in town. Ski area is going to be responsible for producing the snow. We're going to have to move the snow. We can get everything done. And then the last headache is like setting up barricades to get this set up, but we could contract out the barricade part of it to alleviate that burden from public works and allow the whole show to go on in the core of town in a week before Christmas where revenues are generally down.
Or maybe we do a concert in collaboration with that. You know, there's just so many opportunities. I, your point is valid, Jay, but, and we're never going to know that for sure because the events aren't announced and exactly what the skier is committed for. But this is kind of how we got Duke Tour started, you know, the skier came and said, we, we don't want to afford all of this. And the community stepped up in a big way to pay a lot of the Duke Tour expenses. And I think some of us missed that event in December. That brought a tremendous amount of business. It brought a tremendous amount of, of media recognition for Breckenridge throughout the ski season, you know, because it was the first big event and a lot of footage was used throughout the, the season. It was a huge marketing windfall for, for our market. So, I mean, it's a great point. I'm not sure we'll ever really know the answer to it. And I'm willing to take the chance because I think it's that important.
Yeah, and I'll echo that. I mean, I think a lot of our strength is that we are a ski town. And I think for a long time, because we've been extremely busy, there's been a little bit of a separation there. And I think some extra connectivity and, and investment with the ski areas would really benefit both brands and, you know, I'm kind of along the lines of like, I'm in, what are we going to do? Is, is the lens I'd like to take on it, especially with the ski area.
Yeah, I think that's a great way to say it.
The, the other thing I, I mean, there may be opportunities that come through connections with the ski area or other potential partners, I think, using the events committee as well is probably helpful as they see event ideas come through kind of beforehand. And we do have a system for, you know, waiving fees. I think we might be able to sort of rig up that system to also help with, you know, funding requests for something that, that group thinks is worthy. Okay. I do have a question for you though. So it sounds like you're all in agreement on having a fund of money for collaboration and partnership on events, but I didn't hear anybody speak specifically about Pele or the pop-up stage.
I think that I'd be interested in hearing from staff's perspective, what would be best. I think a pop-up stage is, we did see enormous success this summer, and I think that's maybe what that's rooted in. But I also think that there's a lot to be said about the fact that the garage doors go up at the end of the Riverwalk Center. And so there would be like a covered pop-up stage. So I don't know that that's the, the right place. And I don't know if, you know, I don't know, maybe if we need to move Pele or if we just want to move Pele. And so I guess I would probably like to see some more information from staff as to what would make sense for, because we did hear that feedback absolutely about, you know, having some sort of a regular event and definitely activating that area. I think that's a very cool spot. It's obviously very picturesque. But then, you know, to have the Riverwalk right next, or the Riverwalk Center right next door that would be covered and maybe easier for the artists. And then we wouldn't be so beholden to the weather. I don't know. I guess I would love some more information. Do other people feel sort of along that same?
Word. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just think if staff understands the philosophy behind this line item and this money, they can come back with a best, best recommendation for how we're going to actually play it out. So, yeah, I think we want more input. We all agree on the concept.
Right.
Yeah, that zone's certainly magical. So if, if moving Pele is the right direction, great. If it's, you know, to me, it's like, how do you make that better? Is it moving Pele? I don't know. But just engaging and turning that, flipping the switch in that zone a little more would be good.
Yeah, I agree with what's said.
We got a crane for Pele. We might as well move the rock too. That's Kelly's rocks.
There'll be a water main under there. It's going to cost us six times as much.
Marika, okay with the concept?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. No, I, I mean, I think this is a great start and and hopefully gives us something to talk about next month.
Hey, workforce housing.
Good afternoon. We're starting to celebrate almost one full year as a department. We, you know, for so long, we're a division within ComDev. So, yeah, we've made it through one year as a department. But the, the projects and the programs that are included in the budget really are the implementation of the twenty-two housing blueprint. At that time, that's when sort of council challenged us to sort of up our game and, and get more inventory out there. And since twenty-two, obviously we've added a lot of units. You know, our budget for this year and for twenty-six, there is a increase on the revenue side of things. That's driven mostly by a transfer from the Excise Fund, which is really necessary to cover the, the large buy-down that we hope to close on the first of January. Still sort of finalizing the negotiations, negotiations around that, but it looks like that will happen. And so that's, that's obviously a big expense being covered with some transfer in. Regarding our expense side, really our expenses are pretty consistent with what in twenty-six are pretty consistent with what was budgeted for twenty-five. It's a less than a one percent increase, but I think you're pretty familiar with our big projects. We've got obviously the Housing Helps program, the Buy Down program. Focuses, big focus for the housing department. And then the launch of neighborhood and the completion of the Stables Village project. So finishing one up and starting one. So that's kind of the brief summary and we're here to take any questions you might have.
Is our commitment from the county to the Housing Helps solid?
Yeah, they have at least told us that we're projecting to have kind of a similar amount moving forward that we've had this year. And we've always just kind of projected close to around nine hundred thousand from the county.
Just, the question is just based upon the uncertainty that everybody's looking at in so many areas. And I'd hate to include it in our
Budget.
Revenue side if it's soft.
Yeah, they, at least the last conversation that we had with them, they had said that they were still planning to contribute that and share in the, the contribution with the Upper Blue Basin properties. I believe that the county is doing their kind of budgeting at a similar time as ours. So if something were to change, we'd obviously try to make it an adjustment as soon as possible.
Great, thanks.
Questions for housing?
Got one. The, the line items for stables and runway, are they net of proceeds from the sales of the units? Okay, thanks. I assumed that, but I just thought I'd ask. I didn't see a revenue side.
Big numbers, but no questions.
Talk about housing all the time, rightly so.
Excited to hear the buy-down is, is continuing to move forward because I, I think that's a fabulous opportunity.
They really are all great opportunities.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will notice in the five-year outlook, we hope and anticipate that starting twenty-twenty-eight, the Housing Fund will be able to start repaying the loan back to the Excise Fund. So that's where you see that start to occur and is reflected with the, the loan kind of peaking to Excise Fund of forty point seven million. And then we'll hopefully start reducing as housing spots paying back excise.
Great.
When do you think that'll be paid off? When do you think that'll be paid off?
Good afternoon, um, Open Space Fund. So, as you know. The main source of revenue for us is one half of one percent of sales tax. And um, that's projected to decrease in two thousand twenty-six and then we're forecasting it to be flat through two thousand thirty. Uh, our main, our largest expense annually is land acquisition, which in here is, is on the line item minor capital. Um, well, we have, we had four million dollars budgeted for this year. And then in July, when we were guessing how much we'd wind up at, we guessed three point five and in fact, we're just above two. So that changes this a little bit and what it means for our fund balance going forward is that we. We stay above three million dollars through two thousand thirty, but um, this is with a annual. Forecasted budget of spending three million dollars on land acquisition every year and that's just going to fluctuate, but we want to have the flexibility to. Purchase big items as, as they become available. Uh, but given that we don't have anything. Uh, that we're moving, that I'm aware of, that we're moving towards right now, we probably wouldn't close on anything before the end of two thousand twenty-five, so I think. We'll wind up just over two million in that line item for two thousand twenty-five, which bumps our fund balances up for the. This spreadsheet. And the other piece I wanted to call out is just. Kind of the new normal of um, we're spending around nine hundred grand annually in charges for services. That's. Contractors and consultants and a, a, all the work that we, professional services that we're hiring. Um, outside people to do for the projects that we want to um. Get completed at a high standard and I think that that's just a testament to our program has grown and, and that's what it takes, but. Have that forecast to be pretty flat, just increasing three percent annually each year. Happy to take any questions.
Questions on open space?
Oh yeah, Dave pointed out, there's also the two million dollars in two thousand twenty-eight. That's the BGV fee in lieu. So that's, that's what you see there in the um, net line item for two thousand twenty-eight in revenue.
Questions? All right, thank you very much, Duke.
Thank you.
There is no memo on conservation trusts, I think it describes in the cover page, but it's an in and out, basically. Supporting our recreation capital projects. So we'll move past that then, uh, to garage.
All right, um, Garage Fund, this is a um, internal services fund. Um, and this, this uh, division really underpins. All the services or many of the service certainly that this, this town provides. Couple of the highlights um, here, um, again, um. That this division really strives for is, is um, getting uniformity, you know. Working towards uniformity within our fleet. Um, I think one of the areas that, you know, we, you know, just. Um, that we've discussed and certainly is known that we've been challenged. Um, not only currently, but um, in the past as well is just uh, the purchase of electric buses. And um, you know, that storyline started with Proterra and now we. Naming convention is Phoenix buses as that Proterra went out of business and. Has been subsequently purchased by Phoenix for at least a portion of that. Well, the, you know, a lot of that. That challenge, as I just stated, still exists and so one of our. One of our missions within this division right now is to, to look for ways to move past those. Or move away from those particular brands, the, the Phoenix buses. And um, we have um, some um, good history with Gillig buses and that's where we're really moving. Towards and we, the division itself has some opportunities with some. Um, grant of funding opportunity that um, Matt Halsey has been successful. In negotiating, working with, with not only the state but the ski area to, to free up some, some grant funding for. Um, the next purchases of a number of buses. So I think we are going to be coming back here very soon with um. Um, some information for council to, to just um, get kind of just some acknowledgement of. What we, what we'd like to do in terms of replacing some of that current bus fleet. Um, one of the things that I realized was part of this. Packet that I know has kind of probably raised a few questions is the schedule replacement. The replacement schedule that's part of this budget and this, this document is really, you know. Um, used in a couple of different ways. Mainly it's just a, for us, it's a way to kind of keep track of all the equipment and when. Not only we purchased the equipment, but it also, more importantly, those replacement years. You know, make sure that we have the, all the um, kind of the stakeholders and the decisions made around what the next purchases are going to be. One of the things that's captured on there and I just was kind of being a little exhaustive as far as moving away from. The Proterra buses, but on twenty twenty-seven, there's actually the, there's actually two bus replacements called out as Proterra. And those are, I can tell you right now that those were not going to be Proterra purchases. Those will be Gillig buses and um, again, we've got a lot of the. Lot of that um, teed up to, to make those purchases now. Um, the other thing that's kind of might be. You know, both, I guess, interesting or insightful or maybe cause, create some questions is. There's a number of pieces of equipment that are listed here. And you know, that, I think some of that, you know, if I, if I may, is just really. Kind of shows an example of the kind of diverse um, operation base that we do here at the town. I mean, it's everything really from. Air, air raiders, you know, for turf areas or string tremors all the way through heavy equipment and buses and. Um, inside of all that is also our light vehicles or work trucks and our police vehicles and. Um, you know, there's a whole array of um, open sa- space equipment in there as well. Um, again, as I kind of opened up with, we really do work towards uniformity within our fleet. And I'm very comfortable saying that in many of these areas, particularly the, the ones that. Um, the public sees the most, we, we do have a lot of. Uniformity, whether those are Ford trucks for a lot of the operations or Chevy vehicles for some of the police operations. Um, that being said, even um, availability of some of the EV vehicles in that light. Those light categories have kind of been changing a little bit, some of our decision points of. How we're able to purchase and when we're able to purchase, um, you know, even the, the um. Uh, some of Ford, you know, kind of moving out of the county has really put a big. Kind of put a change in the way that we do our business because now we're, you know, going to the front range. And turn into not only source these vehicles, but we also need to now take them down there for service recalls and. Some, some types of maintenance that requires only the manufacturer or the dealerships to do that work, so. There are, you know, additional challenges with. Vision that, that kind of expand beyond just what one would kind of. You know, kind of make general assumptions of how this, this division operates within, with a town. I think that's really the kind of the long points I wanted to cover, but I'd be happy to take any additional questions if there are any.
That's great. I know those were a couple of the questions that surfaced. Any others?
Heard a request to go back to Range Rovers, if that's okay for police vehicles. I appreciate your comments and I think that um, you know, from a, a layperson, you take one tour through the fleet department. Into, through the garage and you see, you know, a hundred different air filters that are for. A hundred different vehicles on a shelf and then, you know, same with the, you know, every, you know, tires and every piece. They go, man, there's got to be a better way. There's got to be a way to conform it and the fact that uniformity is such a huge uh, priority of yours. Um, and planning that for the future, I think is spectacular. I think that will be help with uh. Efficiencies and uh, and quality of life for the people that are in that fleet department, so thank you for recognizing.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Others?
I'm going to ask the question I've been asking everybody, how solid are our bus grants?
We're looking good through twenty twenty-nine right now and that, that really rolls up to, I think we have seven bus replacement. Reple- replacement, replacements, I'm sorry, as part of that. And again, we've kind of, we've got a really unique. Opportunity that was, we kind of had the foresight and again, Matt Halsey did some good work in terms of um. Partnering with the ski area. So right now we have a, again, our next seven buses. Come with a pretty good price tag or a really good price tag, I should say, uh, versus the million plus that those buses now cost.
Did you say next seven?
Correct.
But who's counting? It's great.
Can you operate everything in this fleet?
You know, there was a time, Dick, but um. I'm going to defer on that.
I know you can.
I can, I can make it go backwards and forwards, but there's a, there's a big difference between operating and actually making it go backwards and forwards.
All right, thanks, James.
Thank you.
IT Fund, which. They reported a one hundred percent success rate. I feel like that was pretty amazing. In rating.
But that is in regards to IT.
Because, um, because Chris knows that my proficiency with IT stuff, so. Yeah, if there are any questions, I mean, certainly, I, I would say it's just as a, as a, I'm a user. Um, that the IT department has the three person they punch above their weight class for sure and uh. You know, some of the changes they've had recently is to um, is to bring all the software in-house. In other words. We used to have departments that have their own sort of software and they were running out and grabbing things and so I think having it, having that control. Mechanism I think is really helpful and that changes the allocations, which we talked about a little bit, um, in terms of IT allocation and the like. Um, the other thing I would just mention is just how important it is to, you know, the firewalls and the ability to kind of protect. Um, our network um, from, you know, insidious hacks and that kind of stuff. Um, that's really a high, high priority and so. Um, I would say they try to stay multiple steps ahead of those things and um. I would just, you know, give them huge kudos and, and try to answer any questions you all may have about how, how they function and. And uh, how the budget has changed in the last, last year.
IT questions for Scott?
Guy in the videos doesn't work for us.
He might.
All right.
I'm going to take a break before.
That sounds great. Yeah, please. I'll sleep because I want to finish my one.
Oh yeah.
Excuse me. I think we're but, ready to be back. We are gonna start back into facilities, James.
Yeah, moving along, we're in fund twelve, twelve now. Uh, for everyone keeping track. Um, this division is again, an internal um. Internal service um, division and it's, I'm not gonna read all those different buildings, but I'm certainly. Know that everyone here is aware of all the different buildings that the facilities group takes care of. Um, again, made up eleven staff and that's a tremendous group of folks that, that possess. Multiple talents. And so I think a lot of, some of even that previous conversation that we've had about. Our ability to take in the pro building and, and some of these other. Um, areas, looking at childcare facilities and so forth, really is kind of testimony. To, to the skill sets and, and abilities that this group has. You know, one of the um, major changes and, and just the fund itself is um, recovered earlier. There was a transfer. Out of Public Works and a transfer in that was um, equal going into this fund since it's all being rolled up into. Twelve now, the operations piece and the capital piece. Um, there is. A number of um, two point two million dollars worth of projects next year. And again. Rather than read those, um, they are included in that last paragraph. I do wanna just kind of take a moment, um, knowing that the. Projects list for the next couple of years is, was included as part of the packet as well. That it's just important, I feel like there's an, an opportunity here to just say that we do. With all these projects, we always put everything through a sustainability lens and try to be sure that we're making. Uh, the right decisions, not only for current, but for, for future in terms of. Uh, what makes sense for, for not only the buildings, but for the community and, and so forth. Um. The, you know, right now we're going through the, the window change out here at Town Hall. That project has been postponed or delayed for a little, for some time, but it's just another example of. You know, the efficiencies of new windows is gonna, is gonna pay dividend, right? You know, immediately. Um, you know, looking at next year, we do have a big project. We have a um, three quarter of a million dollar ice chiller project kind of teed up at the ice rink. We're, we're um, looking. We're looking forward to kind of getting some report back on phase two, the tens or the thermal energy network. Um, report and seeing if there is gonna be some opportunities to further explore. That for some of our other areas, outside of the area that's been identified here initially. Uh, one of the challenges with that, I will say, is, is that the refrigerant that we use in that chiller right now is no longer being produced. And it's, it's, it's still available, but it's a little bit like gold bars. It's going up in price. Um, pretty quickly. And so we're, we're, that's as much of a reason to, to move to a new chiller. Soon as.
Sorry to interject.
No, no, go ahead.
Explored heat exchangers with the chiller and I've talked to somebody that, that was involved with another rink back east and they. Talked about doing some heat exchanges.
I know, I know that's a conversation that we continue to have and I think for the scale of this, um. There's a, there's a few challenges to that, but that's something that we're exploring as well and with Jesse and. Her group and trying to understand if there are opportunities, but that's, you know, not to, to restate, but um, we, we do take every opportunity to. To be sure that we're.
I might, af- after this, I'll share a name with you if you.
Oh terrific, terrific. Yeah, that'd be great.
Understand your pain with refrigerant, trust me.
Yeah, you're, yeah, exactly. You're, you're well aware of being in the, in the refrigerant business.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, with that, happy to take any questions.
Questions on facilities? I was very impressed with um, yeah, just the, the number of people and the savings from bringing like the professional building in-house. It's obviously a really talented group, so lucky to have them.
Yeah, we're, we're very fortunate.
Thanks, James.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we're on to special projects, fund number thirteen. The very nice photo of the rec air stage.
Sorry, this one's on me. Um. So this is one we talked about a little bit earlier as far as the grants expenditures. Um, that's, that's a big part of this. This is where you'll find. The three arts organizations that were separated from the standard grant process in twenty twenty-five. Um, which resulted in an overage of almost two hundred thousand dollars. And they want to continue, we want to continue that in twenty twenty-six as far as have the scholarship um, program be one. One element of that grant program, but also have the arts organization um, effort also in that, in that same cost center, but tracked separately. So that we can um, kind of follow through on those commitments that we have. Um, so, and then the other thing that's probably worth mentioning is that. So it's, it's always a strange one as far as the fireworks are concerned, but we're really doing it on the very last day of the year, obviously. And so um, so the twenty percent increase for um. For the cost of fireworks, which is included in that, in that expenditure line item is really for a year from this New Year's Eve. So the idea being that we would expand, um, you know, we, we are already expanding it this year in terms of height and number of fireworks. That was the intent. And the next year, the idea was to increase that as well, also potentially anticipating some cost increases. Um, cause largely those come from abroad. Happy to answer any questions that y'all have.
Alright. So as we talk about this, we're talking about the Breck creative and um, Breck history, or are we doing that separately? So all in one.
Sorry, so we can, we're gonna do those all in one. I guess the one. Point I'd make or add to the grant discussion is that um, there will be a part of the master planning process that talks about. Um, structure and funding. And so. Part of the reason why we're anticipating. The existing grant structure continuing on into twenty twenty-six is that we would recommend keeping that sort of status quo until we have that. Piece of the master planning process done and then based on that, we'll recommend changes.
Have we signed a contract for that master planning process? Is that, I, was a hundred and forty thousand, as I recall, and it was way earlier in the budget. I didn't get.
No, I think the RFP has not gone out yet. We're still working on the details of the RFP.
Okay. Thank you.
It's being, about to be reviewed again. So we, we should be finalizing it here sometime soon and then pushing it out. Hopefully to have someone on board by the first of the year.
And Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think uh, the, the intent is the RFP is done. It just. We wanted approval from council before it went out to make sure everyone was on board with. Uh, the language and what was asking. And so that'll be two weeks from today.
Let's go.
So we're gonna see the RFP two weeks from today?
We'll see, yes.
Oh, that's great.
That's my understanding.
Interesting.
Well, I'll be corrected right now.
Say Julie is gonna keep Jay and I honest.
Good. Jay and Shannon are.
Steering committees reviewed the RFP, so I've made, um, actually, and then sort of again, so um. I've made the changes that were asked and I know Jay's kind of been tracking the RFP, so. If the council is okay with the direction that we've discussed, then I'll, I can go ahead and just i- issue it. Unless you want to review the scope as a group here at the next meeting.
I think I would have a question. There's been several different um. Like one RFP or two RFPs and is this like just for the master plan and then there. Or is it for all three things like master plan, funding and?
So um, there's two deliverables in the RFP as proposed. One is the master plan and the second piece is the organizational structure and funding piece. After our last meeting, um. The organizational structure and funding piece could be an option for uh, to not include for those consultants if they wanted. So. We may have some that include everything and then somewhere. They're just gonna do the master plan and then we'll do someone else for the structure and funding piece.
Great.
I personally'd love to have one more.
Okay.
Stab at discussing the scope of it and. Uh, you know, yeah, the, the whys and. And um, if we're thinking a different direction. Do we want to change the scope or whatever? It might be a, might be a useful work session discussion.
Okay, we can bring it at the next meeting. Thank you.
So then you also have the BCA budget and memo and the Breck history budget and memo in the packet. I think Tamara and Marissa are both here if you happen to have any questions. Um, the one thing on the BCA budget that I would like to just offer an opinion on. Um, the, there is a page in there that talks about town, town funding and operating decisions and it has. Four or five items on there that are. Mental things that could be done and could be funded. Um, the first one is the pride programming and that is just a. Basically a transfer of responsibility. Um, BTO is, and BTO is willing to give that up. BCA is willing to take that on. And so rather than mess with the budget for twenty twenty-six, that's already something that's in Lucy's budget. And so she would work with. BCA on that process and the funding of that particular event. So there's, isn't anything. That council needs to do on that um, now. And then I would say on the other items, I would either recommend. If you want a discussion that we schedule a work session to come back and, and talk about details. Or that you stay status quo on. Changing anything with what you're asking BCA to do until we have the master plan results back. Um, but I think, you know, that's just a recommendation for me and certainly we are willing to do whatever your preference is.
Okay. Did people have questions or um, concerns about? The other three, it sounds like pride is taken care of. So it's the other three and um. Either approving the base budget, I think that's what it's called in the other one. And waiting with the rest of this for after the master plan so that we can have better understanding. People comfortable with that? People concerned about that?
Do you need more information?
Do you need more information?
I mean, at a high level, I think Shannon, you touched on it. We're in the. Process of this big cultural plan that will really inform our structural decision. So I think at a high level, we. Should generally keep the status quo for this year and let the master planning process inform us for. Next year and moving forward.
Yeah, I think that makes. Were you gonna jump in? Go. Go for it. I agree. Yeah, I think there's some structure there that really makes some sense to get informed by uh, the master plan. I think. Personally, I prefer to operate a little quicker and. Would love to maybe see some kind of tied into the investment you were talking about with sales tax. Maybe there's a few things that, that drive some visitation that maybe BCA can be involved in here in the, in the short term that wouldn't. Necessarily upset the apple cart on how they operate. Um. Yeah, I'd love to see something maybe a little quicker, but I'm also okay waiting. I, I think that makes some sense.
In this budget discussion, is there something specific you'd want us to invest further in?
I, I don't have anything top of mind. I think maybe that's where a work session on some of the details and maybe have the. The pros at the arts come to us and say, hey, here's some ideas that could work with our staff and what we've got. Um. And yeah, I don't, I don't have anything top of mind.
I think we have um, you know, we have an understanding of the core functions of BCA being, you know, supporting the partner organizations. Facility management and activating the arts district. And you have seen that those are adhered to. And then perhaps having some more transparency on the other. Initiatives that are in this budget to see if there is um. Any substitutions that council and BCA could see um, related of going, well, if we remove. This, we can put in some popular music. If we take this out, we can add in some of the other town council priorities. And I think it'd be great to have that discussion to just really understand what's inside that budget that are, is outside the core functions of the organization.
Yeah, I think it's a similar, just a similar discussion with everything that we've been having today is that ideally, we would be able to do all the things we want to. With the existing budget and not have to add more to that budget. Um, but it's hard to know if we. What our um, choices are, what the choices are, you know, between what's in those core programs and. And the additional things or, or different additional things like partnerships, like we're talking about with the ski area. So. Um, I would definitely support having a work session on that. Work session, okay?
Yeah, I think it'd be great to just kind of beat that up and figure out how we can do a little bit better and. Yeah, it'd be awesome.
Okay.
And you'll have a quarterly report from BCA at the next meeting. Which may be too soon to have the conversation, but I think it would be at least helpful. which may be too soon to have the conversation, but I think it would be at least helpful maybe to have some discussion with Tamara and Martin, if he's here, on what you might like to see in that work session so that they can be really prepared for that.
That'd be great.
Anything else on BCA or rec history?
Nope, looks good.
It's, I can maybe repeating myself, but from a BOSEC meeting, the prior BOSEC meeting, but we did talk about items of rec history that are directly related to open space and budgeting a hundred thousand dollars from the open space fund towards some of these projects that are prioritized towards that, the open space goals. And so the ones that are mentioned in here have all been very much so vetted and went through, you know, the open space lens to, to make sure that it's appropriate and we're looking forward to seeing them do their great work.
That's great.
That's fantastic. Those are all great projects.
They are.
I'm glad that BOSEC's looking at that. That's really important step.
Okay, the marijuana fund?
There's not a memo on the fund today. It's basically revenues are down a little bit in 26 and then flat in the out years for the five year and then we're continuing, continuing to fund a third of a detective with that. And the remainder, what we can to keep a positive fund balance, we transfer over to childcare. And that's basically how this has been operating, which is covers between three hundred, two to three hundred thousand over the next five years, a year to childcare. And Helen, did you have anything on cemetery? Let me cover it.
Last time before you guys. Geez. Note with the cemetery is that we had tried to do a columbarium last year or this year in 2025, ran up against some roadblocks, so we have pushed that to 2026. And columbarium will house ashes, drawers with ashes, and it just gives us more space and some people prefer that to putting people in the ground. So it's an exciting cemetery.
Helen, I think that's fantastic and I, that to me, the cemetery is such a cool piece of our history. I would encourage you to work with Larissa a little bit on that as we design it, you know, so that it really just fits in and it feels like part of the history of of, of that, that era. I always walk at Memorial Day and remember all the people in there and it's just, it's a special, special place, I think.
Thank you. Yeah, we did a cleanup on Friday. It's all clean, ready for the winter.
Nice. It's really pretty right now because of all the trees. All right. Thank you, Helen. Childcare.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The childcare fund, just wanted to let everybody know that we don't have a staff allocation in the childcare fund. It's kind of been divvied up primarily at rec right now. It used to live in housing and comm dev when it was in community development. However, housing, the housing division is currently advertising for a position in the housing department and that is going to include childcare. So it'll switch over to the housing department. The, I'm gonna go over a couple of highlights and then we'll go over the biggest one last. So so the changes and the changes to services, there's an additional sixty thousand dollars added to that line item. That is because we had the maintenance agreement with the child, for childcare centers, if you recall, that we recently discussed and those are fifteen thousand dollars each for a total of sixty thousand dollars. And the intent of that is to really get at our council priority of maintaining the structures in perpetuity and this money is going to help the childcare centers have a sustainable fund to continuously maintain it and deal with issues as they arise. So I wanted to point that one out. The grants and contingencies line item has gone down to nothing. So, hey? And that is because the strong futures fund is going to take care of that payment from, from now, now on. So that's showing zero as long as our strong futures fund is there. The rental, to note, the rentals is just showing rec Montessori for that twenty four thousand dollars, but we do anticipate in, starting in 2027 in the future that that does go up. Because as we now are going to own the carriage house building and Timberline redoing all the leases. And so we're gonna have some kind of payment that is really gonna go back and fund major repairs. So sort of like a facilities fund for the childcare centers. So let's say their roof goes out and it's like that, that's what that money is going to be used for is for the town to kind of go in since we'll own the buildings to make those repairs. So it's not shown here because we don't have the amount that that'll change to, but I just want to point that out because we discussed it. The, so is there any questions on those items?
Julia, the, the sixty thousand under charges for services for the maintenance agreement, is that going to each center or is that going into our facilities department to then be able to fix and to have funds to fix the each childcare center?
That's a great question. So the town is gonna take care of, for the facilities that we own, the major issues, right? So the structure, the major systems, let's say the HVAC goes out or something like that. But the smaller repairs, let's say a pipe is leaking, things like that. Those are things that the center will have to take care of and that's what that fifteen thousand dollars is for, for them to deal with that, those smaller issues.
And Julie, wasn't it for an HVAC contract? So I think Timberline has a contract. I think it's about fifteen thousand dollars a year, but they come in and do regular inspections so that they can catch things that need to be repaired before they turn into big issues. So that's what I believe they should be using that funding for.
More like fifteen hundred.
Oh, fifteen hundred, okay.
But for four centers and we're hoping that they'll utilize the same services. So maybe they can find some cost savings and we've been meeting regularly with the daycare centers to kind of talk through all those things.
So is that typical of a commercial rental? Because I'm only familiar with residential rentals, which is if you had a leaking pipe or you had your heat go out, you would call your landlord and they'd come fix it or they'd pay for it to be fixed. So I'm just curious, like, how does this work? Because it seems a little bit nebulous about like what this childcare centers would be responsible for versus what the, what's the facilities responsibility?
This is similar to what the Montessori's lease takes care of and what it doesn't. I can't speak to other commercial, but let's say your sink is leaking, you would call a plumber, right? And so the lease, it's just sort of how the lease would be set up would be that we take care of the major stuff and they would take care of the smaller stuff that happens internally.
Currently, how most of the leases are set up is that the childcare centers themselves are taken care of. They're, they're all a little bit different based on who actually owns the building. And so for some of them, like the ones that have a ground lease, the childcare center actually owns the building. So they've been responsible for maintaining that building for however many years and that has not necessarily happened to the level that, that we want or that they should have done, hence the.
So I'm wondering less about the childcare centers because I know they're all completely different and they've had to come, but like in the professional building, because we own the building, if they have a leaky faucet, they take care of it themselves?
Facilities.
Yeah, so it's just a little bit, it's not clear to me if we own the facility, if we own the facility, why would they be taking care of this stuff?
Kelly, the, the, I mean, commercial leases in general.
Yeah.
In my experience, Jay, you probably are it as well. If they're triple net, maintenance is on the tenant. So negotiable items are like the roof, the HVAC, the outside paint, they're a little different with every one. The, the big, big ones, you know, that, that I would call negotiable, but a leaky pipe.
But we're moving away from triple net, right? Isn't that what we just talked about? We're moving away from triple net and into this other.
Gross lease.
Gross lease. So I guess this, I, I guess.
Well, regardless of it being triple net or not, there's that, the maintenance provision is something different than triple net. The maintenance, but these are unique because we're, we're kind of all in it together. So I don't know it's gonna be what a traditional commercial lease is. Commercial leases and residential leases are completely different with maintenance. Residential, it's landlord, commercial, it's tenant. But these are, these are hybrids in my mind because, you know, we're supporting them, so.
It may also come down to what we can handle with the staff that we have.
I also think it was partly the childcare centers themselves are the ones who are, the operators are the ones who are the most aware of the the repairs that need to be made and the ones, the minor ones, the minor repairs and the ones who are in the best position to go out and just say, hey, I just want to directly hire a plumber. I don't want to call the town and then wait for the town to have someone who's able to come and, you know, I think that was part of the calculus also. So I agree with Dick that these are hybrid animals when it comes to these types of lease terms and how we're funding it. It's sort of like we're gonna, we're, we're paying for it one way or the other. It's just how that gets structured. Mm-hmm, yeah.
And facilities felt that this, this way, this model would be a lot easier for, for them and the centers to operate as. Like something's wrong, you can call in and fix it.
I think there's just gonna be a, a level of confusion about like what's, who's, so maybe we can make a list for them in the list of things that we're covering.
Will be in the lease.
Yeah, there is a list.
Yep. Right.
It's okay.
Any other questions on those items? Okay, I'm gonna hand it over to Kristin. She is going to talk about the change to the minor capital line item.
Awesome. Thank you. Great job doing your homework, everyone. Thanks for the questions. I'll take you back to the July seventh work session when we went over different options for the Montessori school. And you all chose option C, which was put a basement under, in the rough construction estimate at that point was one point six to one point nine million dollars. And so, you know, I, I listened to Shannon Smith too much and looked at worst case scenario of what it could cost to do construction and so as I went through the budget process, just wanted to give you the full background here. You know, we have architect fees, construction admin costs, some tariffs, some sustainability upgrades and contingencies that I hadn't included in that estimate in the work session back on July seventh and I'm sorry I didn't include that. But that's how we came up with the two point five million dollars, worst case scenario for fixing the Montessori school. The other hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's in that two point six five million dollar proposed 2026 budget is for design of a little red classroom. So I'm happy to take your comments and, and we had discussed earlier today, you know, do we want to just go back to the one point nine million and have you guys, since that was kind of what you had agreed to at July seventh and we can say we, we'll do our best to make the whole thing fit in one point nine million. And if we have to come back later as we get further along in design, we can definitely do that. So just wanted to throw that out there for you.
Thanks, Kristin. So the two point five is for the Montessori. And that's the same things, but with everything, worst case scenario. Same things we agreed to back on the seventh of whatever month that was that she said.
I agree with the Shannon Smith method of estimating.
Me too.
Yeah, I probably do too.
A lot of money. I'm disappointed that we don't have other option or options that have yet to be vetted that can be accomplished for that, for that kind of money, but that's where we're at.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I feel like I'm the only one that hasn't been up here yet today. Is for our free ride transit service and our paid parking program. Quite a few small increases and decreases really as habits continue to shift with how users pay for parking. Also free parking in the South Gondola during the summer. But also winter revenue increase for that lot as we see usage is beginning to increase. So that's a positive. We're realizing savings in parking expenses driven by a change in payment processors. Otherwise, the big highlight I should point out is the decrease in transfer from the excise fund. Decrease of one point three million. The end goal there is to keep the total fund balance at one million dollars. So I will take questions from there.
Thanks, Matt. Questions? Parking, transportation? Dick?
Matt, does it ever make sense to, or we, maybe we've done it from time to time, but to, to put the, the parking management out to bid, you know, just to kind of keep rec park honest and competitive in, in the world? Have we, have we ever done that or?
We have, yes. Twenty twenty-two was the last one, I think. And then we did one prior to that, a year prior to that. I would say we're getting a, a good deal, but I, you know, we, our contract is up within November of next year.
Okay.
If we wanted to consider at that time. We do have some potential for some technology upgrades that they're offering right now. So something to come at a later meeting, but we can absolutely put it out to bid again.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have issues with them, but you know, it's big, big numbers. So I think it's, it's always good practice to just kind of keep it competitive.
Good point.
I think we've spoken about it before and just seeing the numbers on the parking rates under versus F lot versus Main Street, Wellington. It, it seems that we're usually between a five and six hour equivalent on the street. Depending on whether it's Main Street or Tiger Dredge or Wellington lot to what an all day rate is. And it seemed like Tiger Dredge was the one outlier of that where you know, on Fridays and Saturdays, it would take nine hours to, of parking there to accumulate enough of the, the charges to equal the all day rate. And just curious if there's, if, if you've looked at this, if there's a method to it and if that's, if that's kind of the sweet spot of hitting that five to six hour recovery time for the all day rate.
Yep, I think we have looked at it. I think that the best thing right now at this point is, as we work through this parking study. You know, the RFP closes in about a week and a half. I believe we'll start getting some information from that that might help us make some educated decisions on adjustments to rates in town. Because yes, we do have that issue of it's cheaper to park in many places of town, whereas we want people to park in the parking structure for a full day. It needs to be a rate that they want to pay. So. I kicked the can down the road for you.
Oh, that's perfect.
Is the P big enough?
Oh, actually the P looks great.
There's technically two of them and making sure that, you know, the P is a sign, not.
I know. I know.
It's P, um.
Hopefully that'll help this winter, we'll see, huh?
I hope so.
Do we have some plans to get out the word when the free parking ends? So people aren't getting tickets in there and?
We, uh, yes, we'll, we'll work with our outreach team and, um, everybody else that should be involved to let them know. We generally start with very soft enforcement, more of a gentle nudge to say when the ski resort opens for, um, the season. That's when paid parking begins, but we're pretty gentle on that initial nudge for people.
Matt, I thought at one, sorry, I thought at one point, I thought at one point we, like, if, after we came back from Estes Park, we had talked about maybe doing a little bit of looking into what other planning um, and management we can do of our parking. And I was wondering if the budget is, um, contemplating, you know, looking at, like, I had brought up and I, it might not work at all, but the, um, potential to tell people where open spaces are or whatever, to really just sort of rethink our parking strategy and make sure that we're doing the best we can. Are we doing anything in this budget?
Directly in this budget, I would say not necessarily. Um, we are working through it kind of as our contract with Interstate. Um, they have a lot of technologies, I mentioned earlier, that they have available, um, that they can help us utilize to, to start tracking better data.
And that would be in this budget or not in this budget?
Um, technically it is in this budget. Um, it's just a matter of agreeing to the terms of what they'd like.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for keeping that on your list. Anything else? Okay, thanks, Matt.
So I'm speaking to the Health Fund. Um, we're actually tracking really well, which is a really exciting thing. Our, our consultants that we, our brokers for our insurance are actually like, you guys are doing great. So, um, tracking really well right now. Um, basically with, um, you know, healthcare is very variable. We have no idea how, what, how much our expenses are going to be year to year, but over our average, over the course of now, we've got data all the way back to twenty twelve through this year, we're tracking basically at five percent. Um, and the average trend is like seven to nine percent for market. And we're hearing crazy numbers for this next year, like twenty percent for the market, so, um, we're actually tracking really well. Um, we do know that we can always pull some levers if we need to change anything with our plan. Um, so we can look at our out of pocket maximums, we can look at our deductibles, we can look at our premiums. So we do have levers to pull if needed, um, moving forward, but we are doing quite well.
Great to hear. Questions?
Okay, good news in this one, Bertier.
Good job, everyone, being healthy.
So is it because we, um, I mean, obviously it is because we've been more healthy and had less knee replacements or whatever this year, but, um, I guess you guys do consider, it's just so interesting that we are a self provider and I don't really know that much about it. And so I'm just curious, like, is that something that we reevaluate every few years and we're just doing so much better? We don't even have to reevaluate it. How do we do that?
We always talk to our brokers about that and they have always advised us to stay.
Oh, interesting.
Um, with being self insured because we've trended so well with that. Um, so they've, that's their, like, you're doing the right thing. We've got reserves, um, you know, that we kind of can fall back on in, in tough years. Um, so it's, it's fluctuated, you know, so a few years have been pretty heavy.
Yeah.
You know, and, but we've had enough cushion that we can get through those years and come out the other side, so.
That's great, and especially right now when there's so much uncertainty, so. Great. Nothing else? All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
The only one that hasn't been up here.
Now you are. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present the Sustainability Budget. Um, we have five total staff members and we split, uh, between the parking and transit and together we all make up mobility. But we have three primary staff, um, FTE who work on sustainability issues. Um, and we are primarily tasked with implementing the Sustainable Breck Long Range Plan for the town, as well as our community action plan. And then we also, um, help implement, uh, programs that help achieve the town's two of four su- sustainability goals related to the Destination Management Plan. That is more boots and bikes and then also to be a sustainability and environmental leader. So to that end, some of the work that we've done over the last few years is to, um, uh, establish and set policies and programs, um, not only within our community, but then we share those out, um, through events like the Mountain Towns Climate Summit that we just hosted last week. We implement innovative mobility strategies such as the Breck E-Ride and Breck E-Delivery Program that improve safety and reduce congestion. And then also help provide a sustainability lens for other town projects of you, as you've heard James talk about a couple of different times today. Um, I do want to spend a moment and just talk about thermal energy networks as this is a big budget change for next year. We're moving into a phase two feasibility study to look at, um, really the feasibility of whether or not we can do a thermal energy network here in town. Thermal energy helps to shave off demand on the gas system and shift that energy, that energy particularly heating load to electricity, which significantly reduces greenhouse gas emissions. And it also helps reduce overall peak demand on both systems, which can help drive down costs. And so we have two opportunities with thermal energy networks. One, we received a grant from the Colorado Energy Office to do the fees to, Phase Two Feasibility Study in the spring. And then we also were selected as one of five communities through the Colorado Energy Office and the Public Utilities Commission to participate in a, in a pilot project. So those two projects right now are sort of operating in tandem with each other, but we're hoping that eventually they will cross paths and actually turn into one project. To that end, we're sitting on a, a agreement that I, it is one question I have for you today. Um, to move forward with Excel Energy with a, a community agreement to do the pilot. And so we would need to sign and file that agreement by the end of the month in order to move forward on that project. And it does not, uh, when I say it impacts the budget, the Phase Two Feasibility Study actually impacts the budget. Entering into the community agreement with Excel does not impact the budget for twenty-six. So we think it's a good way to leverage dollars with the utility and to move forward on that pilot project, um, without having to foot the bill for the entire thing. So happy to answer questions particularly on that, but I do need a green light to move forward on that agreement.
Whatever are our obligations under that agreement?
So the agreement right now basically, um, establishes data sharing with the utility. So we get access to some of their, um, gas planning and gas system information that will help inform us, um, really provide some more detail on questions we've had for a really long time. It also can provide some additional, although it is primarily related to gas, information on the electric capacity side. So, um, and then from there, we, we together with Excel would establish the scope of the project and offer up locations that we recommend based on that data share as well as the work that we're doing with Phase Two. Um, and then we come up with a scope of work as to what that looks like. The, the company, the Excel Energy is required by state statute to do these pilot projects. So whether they do one with us or they move forward with another community, hopefully all five move forward. But they're really basically looking at diversity of projects and diversity of communities and understanding, you know, what economic scenarios bear out for thermal energy networks, really. So we are committing to studying it. Um, we are not committing to funding anything at this time.
Is that study going to kind of walk through exactly what you just described there with like the economic side of it? Like, hey, here's the capital to get this going and then here's maybe the capital we would save on like less gas. And here's the return on like the monthly from like just the energy it would generate. Is that, is that what that study is going to do?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna hedge on this a little bit because we are literally developing the pilot in conjunction with Excel at the same time. So we've asked a lot of those questions and we haven't gotten those answers. They want us to enter this agreement before we can negotiate those outcomes, but that is obviously what we want to understand, um, from this process.
Is, I'm curious, is there any like back of the napkin that you've done, just as like, hey?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Keely, did you want to add something? You were pulling the mic over.
I was, but no, I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, at least for me, that'll be super informative. It'll be like, hey, what's the, what's the real value to our community in investing in this, right? Like from a, the financial side of like, why would you do this, right?
And from their perspective, they're looking at ways to, um, you know, shift their capital investments from heavy greenhouse gas emitting fuel sources over to cleaner sources. And they've been authorized finally to, to do that kind of work. And so they're also exploring how a thermal energy network plays into their utility model. Because once it's established, there's no electricity generation anymore. You're just exchanging heat essentially. And so it does shift the model. There's no commodity that's being moved through pipes anymore. And so they really need to understand how that fits into their utility model as well as how it can help us solve problems like our gas capacity constraint related to the Mountain Energy Project. In addition to all of the climate work that we've been doing as well. So lo- I understand there's a lot of questions. We have a lot of questions too. All the communities have a lot of questions, but we're really on the cutting edge of this. And I think in order to answer those questions, we take the next step and enter this agreement and see where that goes.
Yes, thanks for the explanation. I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. Keely's going to review the agreement and she'll let us know if there's any red flags or.
Yeah, we've all, I mean, the, the agreement is ready to be signed. It is, it is very, there's no, um, it's really just some staff time. Is essentially the, the obligation, um, and to work with Excel to continue to develop this. Um, so there is, there's very little in the way of actual financial, there is no actual financial obligation on the part of the town.
Right.
I support it.
And I would add that we, as, as part of the five communities that were selected, Excel was trying to work with each community kind of one-off. And we banded together and got the same identical agreement. We'll be signing sa- the same NDAs for data sharing. Um, and I think that that really surprised the company in that they wanted to sort of work individually. And we said, no, we really think that it's beneficial to, to share this information and to have the same type of agreement. So we've already gone through rounds and rounds with other communities' attorneys as well, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And the other communities are Denver, Boulder, Winter Park, Golden, and then us, so.
Well, I think this aligns with our goal of reducing reliance on natural gas and, uh, sustainability. We definitely want to be on the cutting edge of this.
I think it also, like, I don't want to, um, lose sight of Todd's point, which is it really also aligns with the goal of keeping our workforce in the community because it does deal with affordability. And just, it takes away a big, um, utility, monthly utility cost. And that information, I don't, like, I don't actually think that we necessarily need to wait for Excel or anyone else to do that for us. It feels like we can do some of these calculations, even out at Vista Verde about how much money solar is saving them. And, um, and then I do think, while I love to say we're on the cutting edge of this, uh, Grand Junction and lots of other places have done this. So I feel like, um, maybe we need to start asking these questions to some of the folks who've already done it, just so that we are getting as much information. I know that it's different here than it was in Grand Junction. But still, I think bringing back to this council and helping understand because, you know, we don't want to be the utility necessarily. And so I think helping some of that funding, having some of those discussions about funding or the different structures that this could take, I think would be enormously helpful for this council to even, because otherwise we could get a price tag and totally slam on the brakes. But I think if we knew ahead of time, oh, actually, there are people who have worked through this funding and it, you know, and it can be really much more palatable, um, I think that we should do that homework now and not in, um, not when it's time to pull the trigger. So I don't know if we could have a work session on some of those things at some point in the future.
I would second that. I think after coming from, uh, Mountain Towns, like, you hear all these amazing stats and there's amazing, um, you know, technologies that are out there that geothermal is definitely somewhere where we want to be or at least want to explore and, uh, be aggressive about it.
So to ask a clarifying question, um, so, you know, we, we can share the information, um, particularly Mesa is, um, the, the big one where we have the most data because they've had, they, they've had their system in for over a decade. Um, but to do the level of analysis that you're talking about for a system right now that's hypothetical in Breckenridge without having the utility, understanding the utilities avoided costs and how that plays a role. Uh, I, I don't know that that's staff's capacity, uh, like technical capacity that we could do right now. So are we wanting a overview of what thermal energy networks are and can do? Like you've heard at Mountain Towns for the rest of the council, or are you looking for that deeper dive? Which I think we're going to get from moving forward with Phase Two and the planning pilot. So I, I would love to hear what staff thinks that, um, how you can start bringing all of council along with this discussion. So I think it's going to be a little bit of background information, but I think a very important piece is what are the funding options? And what are the structio- structure options? And so I don't think that we need specifics to our, to like a potential project here. But I do think, um, you know, hearing the person speak about funding at, um, at Mountain Towns was like a big relief for me to not think that we need to put all this money down by ourselves. Great. So I think just more information.
Okay.
To get us all sort of operating. I think we're all operating and, uh, you know, like, maybe not even off the right information.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
It'd be really interesting if there's an easy lift with like Mesa to just be like, hey, what was the investment? What model do you have set up? What, what does that save, you know, entities and, and costs? And like, yeah, what is, what's an easy, like, one-page financial structure of like, hey, tons of success here? You know, what does that look like?
Yeah.
Just to kind of start learning.
Yeah, great. We can, we can provide that. And I think Mesa is a great story because their, their bottom line is that they were able to lower student tuition. Right. Because of this cost saving. So that affordability piece really plays a role there, so. Um, okay, thank you for that direction. Um, did we get? Are we okay with signing the agreement? Okay. The agreement for the pilot? Yep, for the gas planning pilot. Okay, we will move forward with that. And then I just want to highlight a couple of things not related to thermal energy networks. Um, so our budget did, did go up, um, next year related specifically to, um, increasing the scope of the e-delivery program. We added an entire business unit, as our contractor calls it, which is two people and a vehicle. And then we've also been collecting cardboard, um, out of the downtown core. And that is a, a piece that we've added to the expenses. Um, I mentioned all the thermal energy network and then finally, um, this, this is, I want to clarify one thing and then I'm happy to answer questions because I believe that there are some on this one. But the Summit County Landfill hadn't raised their, um, disposal fees since twenty-ten. And they went up eleven dollars a ton. Um, and so that is having a trickle-down effect to the haulers who then pass that cost on to customers. And so we pay for all of those containers at parks and, and our facilities here to haul that material. Um, there's a cost for both trash and recycling. And then that cost, um, is also, uh, going to be realized by other commercial entities in town. Um, this is different from the material management fee that the town collects from the commercial enclosures downtown, which pays for, um, one FTE in our division as well as the maintenance and up. as well as the maintenance and upkeep of the facility. So this is not related to the cost of service for Timberline to haul trash and recycling out of the downtown core. So I want to clarify those two things are separate and that this is impacting the town's hauling fees essentially and not, the material management fee is not increasing next year. I think in using material management for both of those terms, we've confused some people, so I apologize for that.
Makes sense.
But I'm happy to answer any questions. That's all I had for you.
On, on that piece, is, is there any opportunity to negotiate with, with the haulers with regards to, instead of just larger than 2,000 square feet and smaller than 2,000 square feet for restaurants, for instance, around people that are composting already? Because, you know, just an example, I'll use the Hearthstone because I'm not going to have it forever. So it, it might sound self-serving, but it'll be short-term self-serving. The bill just went up to almost $800 for, for hauling. With, they haul very, very little trash for us. We pay for all the composting to be hauled. So is there any way to bring equity to that? I, you know, I, I suggested in the past offsetting the, the composting bills with the, with the, the fee that, you know, that doesn't really go to the hauler. But is there any way to bring equity to that? Because I, I know for a fact there's going to be people that are going to finally throw up their arms and go up and stop doing this anymore.
The, the challenge with shifting the cost for the example of the Hearthstone is that you pay a second hauler, not within the Timberline contract.
I've been doing it for years.
To do, to do that work. And so it's hard for us as staff to negotiate with Timberline when the.
I've got documentation. How many tons?
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but the, like, to ask, to ask the hauler that we're under contract for, like, they are, they are bidding that based on the amount of trash that they already haul. Like that they, you know, they come seven days a week, they haul whatever, 24 cans, whatever it is. And so in shifting that cost burden to other restaurants who don't compost within the Timberline contract, there, there's sort of a, like, if you're, if Timberline was hauling your compost, that cost shift.
For that service.
So they don't offer it at your back door. Right. So we have compost bins now in the Peak Nine enclosure. We have a pilot going with targeted restaurants to make sure that we can do this because through the car, I understand what you're saying, but we haven't been able to shift that cost because you have backdoor service with a second contractor.
And we're keeping a lot of rubbish out of the landfill is the bottom line. And it's not me. There's multiple restaurants.
Yeah, no, and we're trying to solve for individual circumstances where what we really need to do is systematically across all 10 of those enclosures, have the program. And that's what we're working, I, I understand that too.
I love that you're running a pilot, though.
Yeah, so we just got those delivered this past week or two. And it's in the, did I say Peak Nine enclosure? So that's the one behind Kenosha there. And we've had requests come up again for Ice House. And so we'll, you know, as the, as we know what works and works that we can work the kinks out of in those shared enclosures, then we will continue to roll out compost elsewhere where we have space, where we have space. That's the challenge.
Yeah, I, I think it's disappointing because we're penalizing those that are taking the initiative to do the right thing for the sustainability of Breckenridge and for the landfill of Summit County. So I, I just, disappointed.
Jesse, when it comes to the e-delivery, do we have a strategy in place for beginning to charge the distributors? And what does that look like?
So we'll be bringing your proposal back hopefully in early '26. We do have, and I think I've mentioned this before, we do have information from the Town of Vail on how they have modeled it. We understand from the data that we've been collecting that we are about, we move about 30% more product than the Town of Vail does. So there will be some recalculation of their, you know, using their methodology to, to make it fit Breckenridge. We also talked with our contractor this morning just about, you know, whether or not the vendors. Let me, let me take a step back. The, right now, we are a voluntary program. Vail is not. And so in asking for our vendors to pay a fee, we have to be sensitive to the fact that this is a voluntary program and, and it could shift participation back to the streets. And so we're hopeful that we can set the rate appropriately so that, you know, they don't get sticker shock and say, we're going back to the, to the street and driving their semi truck around on Main Street anymore because that's absolutely what we don't want to happen. But we are also sensitive about moving forward with a compulsory program at this point. So there's a lot of complexity given the permanency or semi-permanency of the location that we have now and the voluntary nature of the program that we're just trying to work through. But we do plan to bring something back to you in early '26. I wish it was really easy.
It's, there's a desire to collect a, some sort of a fee prior to it being compulsory.
That is currently what we're thinking right now.
Great.
Yeah. And we would be open to.
There is a value to this we're, we're providing. And there is a tangible value to this, the time and, and expense of delivery drivers having more than one person on a truck to be, you know, with hand trucks and, and doing what, all the things that 106 does. There, there is a monetary value to that that should be recognized at, at some percentage. That's not 100, but, you know, that, that still offers a value for the distributors as well as recouping some of the expense from the town.
Yeah.
So I would agree with you.
Yeah, we agree. And I think we're more confident the larger the vendor is, that that holds true. It's, it's sort of that middle to lower or smaller range vendor where we still think that's true. But whether or not for them, they go back to business as usual or not. And we just definitely don't want to have attrition in the program. So we just want to walk that line carefully to make sure that we're bringing all our stakeholders along and realizing that value.
Yeah, and that value is significant to the, to the distributors. But I hear you because I think the smaller ones tend to be able to see the value where we know it's there, but they're going to have trouble seeing it.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Last fund. Accommodation Unit Compliance Fund. It supports our town's short-term rental compliance program, which has STR operators looking at adhering, adhering to local regulations as well as remitting the required fees. This fund heavily supports workforce housing as well. And the program is budgeted in 2026 to be staffed by 1.6 full-time equivalent positions. This is a reduction from 2.92 FTEs in prior years. This is due to reallocation of a community service officer back to the Public Safety Fund as experience, operational experience showed that the demands of the STR compliance program did not warrant this expense in the Accommodation Fund. The town collects the $756 per bedroom in the Accommodation Regulatory Fee. And these revenues fund the direct operating expenses of the program. And again, as I said, it's a substantial transfer to our workforce housing. And, and this goes, aligns with our council priorities. Revenues for 2026 are $6.8 million. It is down from my 2025 projection due to the less licenses. Expenditures for 2026, the budget is for, at 6.6. This reflects a decrease of 281. And again, the decrease is due to the reallocation of the personnel back to public safety. Out of the 6.6, 6.3 is being transferred to the Housing Fund. Revenues are declining year by year slightly, but it continues to generate significant revenues for our housing program. Again, in alignment with council priorities and, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Pam. Questions on this Accommodation Alliance Compliance?
Well, can you remind me what year we did the study that set the rate at $756 per bedroom?
Thank you. 21?
Before us. Probably 2021 because it was before I started in '22.
And so does it make sense to plan to do a new study?
We could do an update to the study, I think. You know, it hasn't been that long, but we also went through a pretty big swing. And so I think it, we could do an update to that study to see what the numbers say. And I think as you guys all remember, we did heavily discount that fee. So it is, or the number off the top of my head, but I think it's 30% of the.
30.
It's 35. And of what the study came back saying the full impact was of the short-term rental use.
It's consistent with the work.
And I wonder too, right? Like if there's a simpler way of, if, just in my mind of keeping track of the costs and the expense, it's like, do you go with like some sort of inflation adjustment? Do you, do you just up the, say, hey, look, the study showed we're 30% below? Because at some point, you know, I don't know when, but it's going to make sense that that expense should be higher.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's what, what we would want a study to tell us because I think it would also take into account things like, you know, we're not using a full CSO person anymore to enforce the regulations. We're, we're in a different place. So I think there's multiple factors that would affect that. And I would want a study to, to support any changes. I said, but that would be my recommendation.
I don't doubt that it's gone up, but my, my concern, just a little different point of view. My concern is that is now really the time with short-term rentals down. And there, there's a certain amount of angst out in the, in the STR community right now. I, I'm, I'm not sure I, I would agree now is the timing for it. I, I prefer it to wait.
And just to that point, they would also need to take into consideration average daily rate because occupancy and ADR is correlated to short-term rentals as well. And so I think that is a valid point to keep in mind for any future studies.
I just think it's interesting to see as time ticks by, you know, the amount that's collected has a lesser impact now than it did in 2023. And, you know, while we see the average daily rates maintaining, if not accelerating, it, it might make sense to take a look. So just another point of view.
I agree, Jay.
So is this something you want us to do for 2026? Well, I guess, I don't know that we've heard from everybody, but if we are going to do it, is this a 2026 budget expenditure? Or do we pencil it in for 2027?
I'd be very comfortable in seeing it in '27. I, I just wanted just to have it on the, the timeline to, to go into.
I'd say '26 so that we could factor it into the '27 budget if we saw a need for adjustment.
I'd love to see '26. To me, the, the degradation of the impact it has on our housing, I think is significant since 2021 when you just factor in inflation. So yeah, we go for '26 for the study, '27 for the assessment of doing anything.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, '26, '27.
And I think it'd be, if we're talking about a work session to look at this, it'd be interesting to know if this attrition is coming from any particular zone, any particular kind of the short-term rental housing business. I know that initially, when the fees went up, a lot of people who were just placeholders, they weren't really renting. They just wanted to be able to rent, bailed out when the fees went up. Is that still happening? Is it a, or are these people that are selling out and the new buyer is renting? I'd, that'd be interesting to know.
So Bella will provide her STR report, I think, for February 1st, is that right?
Yeah.
So, you know, we can see if she can gather some of that information as licenses start to renew here in November.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
I don't, I feel like we have a really tight budget and we've already spent like $500,000 more dollars. I would be fine with putting this, penciling this in for 2027, the study. I'm assuming it's going to be whatever, $100,000 study.
Yeah, I can't remember what we paid EPS the last time.
That seems reasonable. I mean, I, yeah.
To Dick's point, I don't think there's an urgency to do this study. We have a lot on our budget next year. I'd be fine doing this in '27.
I don't know what that got you.
I think, yeah, there's already four.
But Sabina, I, I can, I, I'm pretty flexible on when we do this. I don't think it's urgent, so.
Yeah.
Let's see on the roadmap.
Yeah. So I think, it sounds like we can push to.
So 2027?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Bottom numbers now.
Okay.
Have to blow through. We have time, so.
We're not going to, not to that level. There, there's a lot of numbers, but we're not going to. It's just a summary of everything and Tracy wants to walk through them, so here we go.
All right. So I'm skipping past a page where we have the roll-up of revenue and expenditures that includes transfers and focus on the one net of transfers just because it gives more of a representation and doesn't inflate the numbers by about 60 million where we have funds moving back and forth between all the different areas. If we look at the ultimate roll-up of revenue for 2026, the 2025 budget was $137 million. Revenue for 2026 is $134.7 million. And this is down about 2%. And we've already spoken through the assumptions and reasons why the, those revenue numbers are dropping. And as we look towards the additional four years that is included, you'll see that 2027 kind of continues on with that trajectory of 2.2% being down to 131. And then you'll see this blip in 2028 where it then jumps back up. And this is representative because of the $31 million that we've got built in for the potential debt that we would get that revenue in. And the $2 million of density rights that's also in 2028. And then you'll see the, a little slow climb for '29 and 2030. And that's kind of the high level is because of the 10% water rate increase that we see year over year. The continued and building success of fiber network. We do have the grants for the buses that continue through to 2029. So that is favorable to the revenue there. And that's pretty much the high level for revenue.
And I, I would just want to point out, or just a reminder, that we are making very conservative assumptions. And as you can see on there, our budgeted number for revenue and our projected number for revenue is about just over $2 million difference. So we did do better, or planning to do better this year than we, and budgeted. So it is, I think it's absolutely appropriate for us to be conservative with those revenue projections. But lest we get too panicked by it, just remember that they are very conservative budget assumptions.
Yeah, it does tend to paint the worst picture because we are conservative in revenue. It does tend to paint the worst picture because we are conservative in revenue, but then we are aggressive in expenditures. So hopefully there's always that favorability. When we look at the overall expenditures for 26 and on out, there's a lot of fluctuations. And that is all driven by capital improvement. Projects that we have going on as they fluctuate throughout the years. We've got different expenses hitting depending on some of those major projects that are coming up in the out years. But that's really what is driving that fluctuation. When you look right down at the very bottom number, right down here. The, as Shannon mentioned, this is kind of the worst case scenario of we would potentially finish out 2026 with a deficit of just a hair over 14 million. But as we traditionally see with capital improvement and Shannon Smith's methodology of worst case scenario. A lot of those expenses may not occur within that given year and tend and may roll over to the future there and then push on down. So it would be expenses that we will incur at some point, but may not be in the years that we anticipate. So we, we may see that shift on down. But then you'll see because of the fluctuations of capital, 2027 looks bad. It's just a look. I don't want, I'm not really concerned about it because then we have the favorability in 2028. Because that funding and then it kind of flip, you know, flip flops as we look to the out years. Then we get to the fun part. The cash flow. God, I love this. Love this schedule now. I used to hate it when Dave first came up with it. Took me a hot minute to get my head around it. Couple of takeaways on, on this schedule. The, this is just really an ultimate roll up that you'll see of the revenue that is net of transfers. We break down the operating expense and capital expense. So you can kind of see the, the, the net effect of that. And then we look at to what money flows out through our balance sheet that is not would not flow through on the P and L. And that's where we show the cash in and cash out. And then we get to the ultimate cash. Either positive or negative throughout the year. And then it's just cumulative to show what would be the impact over the next five years. Now before you're like, oh my gosh, you know, 60, we're bleeding 69 and a half million dollars by 2030. Let's just kind of take a breath with that because that is a, a hard number to look at. But there's a lot of opportunities that we have here with this cash flow. So ultimately the goal ideally would be to have a balanced budget and that's where we kind of look to these numbers here. And these numbers don't look that bad when you compare it, you know, if you're looking at 69, that sounds a lot, but the deficit that we have on the balanced budget isn't horrific. We have the opportunities, right? Of where can we increase revenue? Those are always going to be new opportunities to, to bring that in. As Shannon mentioned, we're very conservative on those numbers. And then we can look at expenses. Where do we have opportunities to create efficiencies? On the, our costs. Can we look at, you know, some of those ongoing expenses as a, you know, opportunities to maybe centralize or create some type of purchasing ingredients that are going to agreements that are going to be more favorable for the town? And look at where we are doing with our capital. Is it true in the years that we have it? Are we going to see that roll over? And where does it really push that expenditure down to? Really looking at the, the, the numbers, I really want you to kind of focus on this, the surplus or the deficit of the K P I's. We're running really well for next year. And the, the message here is that the town is not going broke. We do not have any, you know, we're not, we're not in trouble in any way whatsoever. We just have to be cognizant of what this cash flow is saying. And ideally, as we look to the outer years, how can we move more towards a balanced budget to get these closer to 100%? But we're not that far off. So the ultimate message is we're not broke, we're fine. We just have to be conscientious of what this is painting and what can we do to move the needle just a little bit? Cause that will impact this greatly. Do you want to say anything with that one?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, this is the new C I P that we did in September. This is the roll up. You haven't seen that until now. So we did trim off some dollars through the C I P review. We did have a lot of stuff stayed in. It did. And that reflects, this is reflected here. But I would keep an eye on these out years as we go forward every year, especially as we fast forward a year from now, you know, because we don't want to. We, 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 we can't continue to bleed every, I sorry, the word bleed. We can't continue to lose the, that material amount every year and for the next 10 years. That just the math doesn't work. So either as Tracy mentioned, find ways to help out revenue streams. You know, we were conservative, but you know what? Right now we're in uncertain times. So I think that's okay. And, and then we tend to not, Tracy mentioned a little bit, we tend not to spend. Even on operational, we tend to not to spend every dollar that we do budget. Whether we have vacancy, which we don't really budget for vacancy, things like that. So there's probably, this is, this is a worst case, I would say. Probably won't be like this if we were sitting here five years from now, but it's trending. I look at trends and that's kind of how we're looking now. Last year we were getting more towards a break even. When we did this exercise and this year, a lot more things stayed in the C I P. We added in the water treatment plant, you know, costs. I think runway, runway is more than last year when we sat here and did this for phase one, it's more. And so those things kind of creep up. We have the bus barn. We have, you know, just different projects, the pavilion we talked about earlier today. So those things just add up and you're seeing that right now. So it's an awareness, nothing more. But it's, you know, as you look down the road, just to be aware of where things are headed. I'd say we have K P I's. To me, this is the most important one to look at, which is why we do it.
Tracy, can I ask you a quick question on the previous worksheet? What is the difference between the left of the green and the right of the green, the 2026 proposed versus 2026 forecast at this time? Like why, why would those be different?
That's 2027 forecast.
Yes, 2027, 28, 29, 30.
Look, mine says right? Okay. All right. Good enough for me.
This is wrong.
Yeah, let's say bar.
Yeah, I think that it should be 27, 28, 29.
Okay.
Do you see?
The top of the column. Oh, it's different on yours.
Our package will, she's a little bit different.
Yeah.
But my packet's the same as theirs.
Oh, really? Oh, you hear the important one. You get the real copy. Yeah, that's right.
Very nice.
Weird. Losing.
You just on the website?
Oh, yes.
So the, this is the roll forward schedule. This is where we take, look at the the forecast for the ending balance within each fund after restrictions. Ultimately, it comes down to what is the discretionary fund balance? Which for, for yourselves, you, you can think of it like, oh, what, what cash do we have to? But this, the, the more that we can keep within the discretionary balance is really there for emergencies or things that we don't plan for that are needed to be done. So before you're like, ooh, let's go spend 37 million over the next so many years. It's there really is that cushion for the unexpected. And the more that we have available in just in discretionary funds, the better for, for the town. Based on the decision that we made earlier on, the only thing that is going to be changing, because we can't, when we realign those expenses for Helen's Department for Marketing to take out those operational costs and put that up to the, to the general fund. You're going to see the, the marketing fund is going to improve by about that half a million year over year. So this will no longer have a, a, a presentation of a negative fund balance come 2030. And that will all roll up once we make those changes.
And at the bottom of the schedule, I do, I would just add, I don't know the timing or what will happen with runway, but on stables, we had to back with a line of credit when we did stables. And so just in negotiating with First Bank, you know, they really look at that total fund balance right there, which for next year is 61 million. So that's an important number just to keep in mind as we look at if we have to do anything for runway. I don't know if we will or what the amount would be, but just keep that in mind from.
Always wonder what they look at. Is that it? The total fund?
Oh, I got it done. Yep.
The debt schedule gives a position of where all of our C O Ps that we have outstanding and the overall balance right now is around about 164 million of still debt to pay down. We pay about nine million down every year of cumulative of all of the, the debt. Now, if we do move towards taking on new debt in 28 potential, that would be representative up in the utility fund. And we've already met with our broker who's going to be doing that analysis to decide, is it needed? And come back with recommendations potentially to either be a new C O P or they're also looking at considering rolling in our existing two C O Ps and just making it into, to one. But we'll see what they come back with, with recommendations. Once they've done the water study and have had some time to consider what would be the impact of new debt? And what would be more favorable to us when they go to market? And onto the very last schedule. These are K P I's with the, the key performance indicators that are recommended by G F O A that we consider. And this really gives us kind of the overall health or scorecard along with that cash flow to make sure that we are moving in the right direction and we're making the best decisions and being fiscally responsible for the town. The top one is the cash to liabilities ratio. Let me make it a little bigger. It's a little small. There we go. And this is actually data that comes from our act. So it's a statement of net position. And it says ultimately, like, do we have enough cash to pay our current liabilities? And you can see that with a, the benchmark of we ideally want to have a greater than one, we are very favorable. And this was using the numbers from our act for that was published in the middle of the year for 2024. For the unrestricted fund balance, this really considers the excise fund and the general fund, the balance of the fund balance after restrictions of these two funds, net of transfers. And we looked to what is the, again, the benchmark of our expenditures against those two fund balances. You're going to, as this representative of the point to six, yes, you could say it's very close to the two months, but we did include the restriction for runway in this number. So it kind of, it's impacted this number. But it's just because we loaded in a 57 million restriction for, from runway into that, that number. Debt burden ratio. This one really considers our total revenue to pay down our outstanding debt. And you can see very favorable to our, to our position of revenue coming into how much debt we pay down each year is only nine, we pay down about nine million. And we have plenty of revenue to cover that. The operating margin ratio. This really considers that how much is added to the fund balance? How much are we saving? Right? How much are we, are we putting away? And this is really just so showing that we are flat. We're not, we're not sort of banking, you know, saving any money. But on the other hand, we're keeping very stable with that. And that's because really over the last couple of years that we're staying and, you know, quite balanced to the budget. We're not saving any money, but we're also not, what was the other word apart from bleeding? You said? Whatever. The more favor. Losing, I know that's even worse.
Bleeding.
I'm doing that word.
These are governmental funds. It's not the entire town.
And the, the very last one is in that position of the enterprise funds increasing or decreasing. And what we're really looking for in the enterprise funds is a utility golf cemetery. Within the, we won't see these numbers stay stable when we're really looking at, again, this comes from our act for the statement of net position for these are part of the business of the town. We want to see these number, these ratio numbers stable, of which they are. So overall, this scorecard from our standpoint is successful and favorable for us to, to present to you. And that is it.
Five hours.
We need a few more questions.
Go back to the beginnings.
You had a question on that first fund?
Yes, that was an extremely comprehensive review. I appreciate your patience with this.
No, good. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks to everyone.
It's a great format. I very much appreciate the efforts.
That, if you guys liked that format, we'll continue to do that going forward.
I like it. Very good.
Mess with you. We're start in the middle now.
Yeah, we'll be in the middle.
With more thinking about the, you know, the descriptive memos that try to give you those highlights and explain what the departments do and, and that kind of thing. I think whether we go forward or backwards probably doesn't matter as much as having that information available for you.
I think it's great. And I also loved having all the senior leadership team or managers come down and talk to us.
Sure. Tracy and Dave were a little bored today.
That was great.
We were more than entertained.
It is a good thing for the financial team.
Say Shannon, this, this process in the years, you know, however many years that I've been involved with it, it every year you go through it, you realize just how much our staff does and how great, you know, there were so many details to running this town and you see it in the budget. And it's so impressive. I mean, the, the whole team, you know, kudos to, to the entire team, the senior management team, everyone. It's, it's just, it's so impressive that there's so many pieces and parts and you get in the thick of the weeds and you feel like something's not going the way you want. But when you look, step back and look at the big picture, picture in this process, really, really impressive. I mean, I, I'm proud to be a part of the, of the whole thing, honestly.
And I want to thank Tracy for putting up with me since May on those projects. Did a great job. And also want to say it's been great working with all of y'all. This is my last council meeting. So I'll leave it at that. It's going to be hard to say goodbye.
Getting out of here before there's too much snow.
Y'all are good folks. Well, I'll miss you.
Well.
Troy, you've accomplished.
Yeah, you've done a lot for us and really made us a confident team to be able to move forward. And we have a ton of confidence in the advice that you've given us over the years. All of it has been excellent and really appreciate your leadership through, through a lot of uncertainty. You did a great job.
I have no idea where I'm going, but what the heck, let's go.
Well, thank you. Okay, so.
So I don't know if you all want to take a leg stretch break and then come back and do your committee report outs and.
Well, we still have planning commission decisions, legislative review.
Yeah, never mind. Carry on.
Do people need a break? Is it okay? Okay, five minute break. We got time.
I'm good.
Todd, you just stay here and hold down the fort. Todd, you just stay here and hold down the fort. Okay, we finished the budget, so we are going to move on to our next item, which is planning commission decisions. Any comments? All right, we are on to legislative review code amendments for liquor licensing, second reading.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Um, tonight to present to you for second reading is a proposed ordinance. That would amend title four, chapter three of the town code to remove references to liquor licensed drugstores. Um, the state recently passed legislation prohibiting the issuance of new licenses. For these establishments and the town currently has no liquor licensed drugstores, so the update will align, align town code with current state law. Staff recommends council approve this ordinance tonight on second reading and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, May. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
For second reading. Municipal court restitution ordinance, second reading.
I'll take this one. Good afternoon, council. Um, we have for you tonight, I proposed ordinance for second reading that would change the way restitution is ordered and the timelines for. By which it is ordered by the municipal court judge um, in the town code. So this is um, driven by new state statutory timelines and we will just be matching those new timelines.
All right, thanks, Kaylee. Any questions? All right, ready? And US bank lease, second reading.
Uh, good afternoon, mayor and council. I am here for the second reading for the US bank lease renewal agreement. Uh, a tenant at the Breckenridge professional building next door with moving. Uh, from a net to a gross lease, but more importantly, they are requesting. A three times three year extension that uh, would give them tenancy options to stay to twenty thirty six. Uh, this is a second reading and looking for approval of that extension.
Thank you. Any questions for Tracy? Thank you. Okay, we're into managers report, Shannon.
Um, so we did not put anything in the packet expecting that we would go much later, so we don't have any updates for your normal. Items that would be in the manager's report, but if you think you have any questions, whether it's public projects or mobility or sustainability. Um, housing, any of those items, have folks here who can answer them.
And I don't think anyone has any questions. Am I right?
Come up with something.
Can anyone think anymore? All right, um. Okay, other planning matters? Should we just go into the night meeting for the report of the town manager and staff?
Sure.
Okay.
Be fine. Um, I really only have two things unless something strikes me between now and the end of the evening. Um, if you have not responded to Peyton about FERC wine dinner tickets, please do that so we can get a head count. And then, as I was just mentioning, uh, Scott and I are both away next week, beginning on Wednesday. Uh, essentially Wednesday through Monday and Julia will be the acting town manager while we are gone.
Exciting. Okay. All right, report of the mayor and council members. Um. So we did have a cast meeting last week and. We had the emergency managers, we had our own man, emergency manager. Um, and then we also had a neighboring emergency manager really report out on. How to get the information out to people. Sounds like the reverse nine one one, not surprisingly, is the best way to get information out, but they did talk about. Um, you know, making sure that you're signing up for your county. Information. What do they call that?
Alert.
Alerts. That's the alerts. Yes, thank you. Um, and um, they had a few suggestions for the electeds in the room and that was to ask. Um, who declares a state of emergency and who issues an evacuation order? Um. And then also just information about or asking who. Um, where do they get the information? Where do people get information about resources and if you're evacuated, where you should go and. Um, where you can put livestock, all kinds of things like that. Um, so probably when our emergency documents are done. Um, we'll have that discussion, but I don't know if you want us to have that discussion before. I mean, that's a county thing, so.
Well, actually, so, and we have a um, an annex in that plan, so it would be good to have. A conversation around the Breck specific part of all of that. Um, we had hoped to have the emergency manager here. I was gonna say it was in July maybe or August, we'd planned to have a presentation to you. Um, but you know, things had to be changed, so now that Brian is back, I'll try to reschedule with him and have him come in and. And chat with you all about all of those things.
Shannon, remind me, did we declare a state of emergency during COVID? I know we got you and Rick more power. Was it through declaring an emergency? Well, because we had to make quick decisions, you know, and, and uh. I mean, that was, that was, you know, interesting time.
Yeah, very interesting.
But uh, we'll use that word, right?
Yeah.
Did, is that what we did? Okay, so it maybe is, you know, you think you'll never use it, but you know, it was very useful in that instance, I thought.
Yep. Yeah, they had to have it. Yeah.
One of the, one of the other things that came out of that discussion that, you know, played a, this tiny little role, but. Um, maybe kind of think about what, what power we have. From a town's uh, point of view is the lack of cellular reception in this area. And how that can actually have a safety impact of these reverse nine one one calls or be able to get a hold and. If we just kind of, if we have any um. Any tools to help uh, provide better coverage uh, on a safety standpoint. And um, you know, kind of what, what would the process would be on that and if there's any uh, if we have any flout in, in making any of that.
I don't, I don't know that we do in the areas that don't have, you know, I mean, I think they're working on. You know, the dead spot by the high school and the dead spot in French Creek and that kind of stuff, but if you're thinking like somewhere. You know, Boreas Pass Road or, you know, areas that are a little bit more in the. Um, not really the back country, but you know, that, those kinds of areas, I think it's a little bit more difficult to manage that. Or to solve for that.
Yep. Anything else? Did you want to add anything else? Um, they also did a presentation. From the state of Colorado. I don't know who, I can't remember who presented for the thermal energy networks and grants and funding. At that.
A group from Steamboat?
Yeah.
Oh, it was um. The woman who runs the Yampa Valley.
Yeah.
Michelle. And Matt Kirker.
Oh, that's right.
Kirker, used to be with Bennett's office.
Yeah.
Um. And I think theirs was interesting. I thought it was going to be more. Of, about geothermal, but it, you know, I think was more about legislation.
Yeah. Yeah, and then the two other things, one was a presentation about AI and how you can use it to. Um, do different uh. Enforcement tools, I guess. The one they specifically presented on was short term rentals and making sure that. They had the licensing and um. Everything was up to date and they felt like that it had been very successful for making a huge. Task a little bit easier to complete. Um, what was the last one?
The hot topics?
I think that was.
I thought there was one more.
Hot topics, um, we talked a lot about the noise ordinance in the case out of Salida.
Oh, yeah.
We'll be bringing that to you. Is it the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, we have, we already have it changed in our code um, to reflect the new law. It mostly because. Who knows what will happen at next legislative session? I know CML is talking about trying to clarify or make some changes and. Shannon and I talked about it and we're like, let's just get it done now so that we don't have an issue.
Um, I thought we didn't really want this law, though.
We don't, but we, I mean, I, the, the. Case law, the Supreme Court of Colorado interpreted it pretty definitively and so at this point it's up to. Um, and not so much in our favor, um, because now the only entities that we can issue sort of variances where we can. Um, lower the, or raise the threshold, I guess, for the, the um, the DBA for the amount of noise. Um, are when it's either a use of a property that's owned by us. Or a nonprofit or a lessy um, or contractee. From us that's using our property. So it's a, or a nonprofit's property. It's, it is. Um, confusing and not ideal. It, it doesn't really affect us because. The only places where that's really happening is the Riverwalk Center. Um, so otherwise. It, it hasn't been a real issue for us, but it does mean that for now, we can't issue um, an exemption or an exception. Permit to like a restaurant that just wants to have outdoor music that would have a decibel level above the state limit.
So.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I think so, but have, but we better. People know in the community that they're going to be in.
I don't know that anybody's been getting, we haven't issued any, any exceptions under our code in years, as far as I know.
Yeah, I mean, I, maybe the last time we did that was like the concert that was in the. South Gondola parking lot before we built the structure where we may have. As part of the event permitting about them to have higher decibels or whatever, so it's, I don't think it happens. Very often, we just want to make sure that we don't run afoul of. That case while it's exists as it does today.
Yeah.
Hmm, interesting.
We can talk about it more. I mean, if you guys want to wait and not do anything, we can do that. It just seemed wise to clean up. There was another code change that we needed to make in the noise ordinance anyway, so it seemed like. We might as well sort of do it now because there's zero guarantee what will happen next legislative session, right? I have no idea. Um, if CML will be successful in changing this or. Um, or in clarifying it through the legislative session or not.
Okay. Interesting.
Yeah, it's a funky. Deal.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay. Next up is open space.
We have a meeting on Monday.
Tourism office.
Uh, yes, we did have a meeting. Um. Let's see, uh, we went over financials, there's solid, um, did a Oktoberfest recap or a bit of a recap. Um. We're hugely successful considering, I don't know if you guys really knew how hard the BTO staff worked to get the beer sponsor at the eleventh hour. But they worked really hard and it was a, it was a big success. Um, I think Stein sales. Um. Either way, I mean, the revenue was, was, was flatter up a little, so expenses might. Might be a little higher. Um. And we may improve some. We don't have all the vendor fees in yet, so we're not exactly sure where bottom line is, but generally it was extremely positive. Um, so um. It's interesting, one of the vendors told us. That we're on par with Denver beer sales. They do it two weekends. We just do it one. So, it puts, puts in perspective how successful our Oktoberfest is. Um. Let's see, we're, we're adding a, a new event or working on a new event. Hopefully it, it comes through, I think it will. Um, Global Fire. It's a high end culinary event, um, cooking over live fire. It's um. Going to be hosted at the Country Boys, so we'll bring an element of history and culinary together. Um. Sounds really exciting. They, they um. Aspen's done it um, a couple tie, at, at least once, I think twice. And hugely successful, lots of national press. And uh, so should be a, should be a great event to get, really is a brand building event. Uh, last, last week of June is where we've got it, um, got an eye on it for. Um. Uh. Let's see, you, you know, we're going to put a little more effort into winter, you know, we're not. The BTO is, again, not, not going dark during winter at all. We're gonna, we're gonna keep PR efforts and social media efforts and uh. You know, putting some investment into winter with anticipating. You know, it's just the headwinds and, you know, and, and that's. Um, why all the attention? Um, as was reported earlier, the, the um, BCA is gonna take over Pride. Um, and the CTO drone show we're still working on, but it um. Looks like, um, looks like it's gonna happen, so. Um, should be fun with the two fifty, one fifty. Um, thing. Uh. Uh, ch, 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 ch. Collected a hundred, over a thousand pounds of food for FERC at Oktoberfest. Uh, we're gonna have more. One comment we got was more non-alcoholic beer and non-alcoholic drinks, which we're gonna respond to. Um. Got great input on the food vendors. Snow sculptures, um, twenty fourth, twenty eighth with viewing, twenty eighth to the third. Um, new teams this year, including Ukraine and South Korea, which uh, should be very fun. Um, no timed entry. We're gonna um, give it a go without this, that this year. And you know, I think that'll be beneficial to our guests. I, I think they prefer not, not good doing that. Um. Uh, and the uh, you know, the ski areas event that I think um, Marika alluded to is. December seventh or, or December seventeenth, twentieth, at the same time as Uller. Uh, with an in-town rail jam and uh. Right after the parade. Should be fun. Should keep town rocking for the weekend, so. Hopefully we can bring back that energy and start ski season with the bang. That's BTO.
Um, Kaylee, with that last event, do you see any issue with the Salida ruling?
Where is it located?
On Main Street.
Washington?
I know, that's, so that's public property.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what a weird thing.
It's very weird. Yep.
Great, good recap. I was putting the ski areas thing in my calendar, or I lose track of that. Uh, Breck history.
Thanks for approving the budget. We'll meet down the road.
Great projects, by the way. Take care of that.
Good luck. Um, Breck Creative Arts.
Had a board meeting on October second. Went through the financials, budget submitted, budget approved. Um, I think we're. Waiting on the outcome of the master planning process, just to try to see where we stand with. The town and the process. I think taking over Pride was a logical fit and a nice transition. Uh, and Breck Create will have its quarterly report at the next meeting. So we'll get the, the full report next meeting from. Boris's mouth.
Great. Social equity.
We have a meeting tomorrow and then in our regular meeting, there'll be, excuse me, an appointment and a reappointment for two commissioners.
Great. Arts and cultural master plan steering committee?
Uh, so we did have the um.
Uh, so we did have the, um, uh, the RFP go through our steering committee, which Carol attended for me. And, um, with a couple of adjustments, it's ready to present to council in two weeks.
Great.
We did have MMC, I think, since.
Was that since the last one? Do you wanna report out on that?
Let's see. We talked about, um, the nicotine fund. And we also talked about, uh, emergency rental assistance. Which, I, I don't know if you all recall, we talked about it a while back. We had come, um, contributed to a program that FERC was running and I think they ran it for probably 18 months or so. Really well-received, really, really well-run program. They made the money last for a really long time, but it's since run out. And they're, just with economic conditions, there wasn't a, an interest from the other jurisdictions to contribute to it again going forward. We talked about doing it through the Housing Authority, but that wasn't, um, wasn't agreed upon either. So it came up again as we've been talking about, you know, what kind of things would be supportive of our community in general and our immigrant community. And so we had a lengthy conversation at the meeting about contributing again to that emergency rental assistance fund. And I think, I think Kelly got everybody.
I was a little aggressive, I'm not gonna lie. It didn't even need to be done. I don't know why I got so aggressive. Everybody was willingly participating.
Impressive, Kelly.
It was very impressive. And then we talked about the RTA again and why, you know, just isn't moving forward at this time. I don't know, I thought that conversation went fine.
Interestingly, Silverthorn and Dylan, I feel like, was it Dylan?
Yeah.
Were very bummed. Like, they were, they were like, what? That we really want this to happen, so what do we have to do? So it might be exactly what it needs, which is some support besides just from Breck and the county. So we decided we would sort of take the year to start gathering information, get a different, um, consultant involved and just start helping the community understand what is an RTA, what do you get? Why would you wanna do this if we already have a bus system? Which really none of those questions were super clear. And so I think, I actually think it'll be, um, more successful this way.
Yep, I agree.
It's interesting how many there are. I mean, I was, when I went out to Utah, you know, I saw Gypson RTA and, you know, Eagle and, you know, it's, it's, it's becoming a more popular model for sure.
Yeah, yeah, there are, I mean, there's some grant funding opportunities that go along with that. The governance model is a little bit different and that could be beneficial. There's, I think there's a lot of reasons, but to Kelly's point, nobody was talking about the bene- the community benefits to doing an RTA. So it's time to, we need a little time to regroup on that, so. Kelly and I at that meeting and then again at the cast meeting had an opportunity to meet Bennett, Senator Bennett's new representative, Delaney Deskin. So it, you know, a nice, it was a nice opportunity to meet her and, um, get her contact information in case we need to talk to Senator Bennett about anything. Thank you very much. Did a much better job than I do.
Okay, any other matters?
I have one. Just recognize the loss of an iconic member of our community yesterday. Seamus O'Toole passed away. One of the founders of the Devil's Triangle and Seamus O'Toole's Roadhouse Saloon, which is now the Breck Theater. So, um, he lived a full life, shall we say. Again, it was quite the character. He, he gave a lot of authentic character to this town in the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s.
Was he still around?
No, he was in Florida. He was having a lot of health issues, so, yeah, it's, uh, no, he was here two years ago. And, um, he had a bucket list, uh, that he wanted to ski one more time. He was, he was a great skier. And, uh, he came and skied, he made it halfway down the run and then Kevin Aherne came down, put him in a sled. They went to the bar and had a beer. Uh, in full character of Seamus. So, no, you know, he was quite a legend. So just to recognize him.
Thanks for bringing him up. Any other, other matters?
I have one thing, Kelly. Um, Marika and I attended a meeting of the school district last week. The school district is, uh, working up to a ballot initiative next year for a bond issue, again, having not been successful with their last one. They're trying to be more transparent and specific about their needs. So the meeting we attended was about a master planning process, prioritizing projects and focusing on facilities. The, the school district, the superintendent has formed a committee of citizens and there's teachers, there's administrators, there's parents. It's a wide leaning group that is meeting at least two more times, I believe, to work on this master plan. And then try to get out in front of, uh, the publicity for a ballot initiative. Uh, they expressed appreciation that the town was represented there. Shannon let us know about it. And, uh, I think they acknowledged to this committee the partnership they have with the town for the housing piece and going forward with the bond initiative. One of the big pieces is going to be Breckel and Upper Blue and what they do with the Breckel Building and the students there. So next meeting is November 12th, but I think we're both gonna go again and see what's happening just to stay on top of it from the town perspective.
That's great. Thank you guys for attending that. I have one that's sort of in the same vein, which is it, several of the nonprofits have talked to me about this and then it's coming up more often now that we're gonna be receiving some childcare money from the Strong Futures Fund. And the county, that's, you know, a tax and it's through the county. But there is, that sun sets in 2028 and there's a pretty, you know, high level of interest to make sure that that would stay in place and be re, I don't know, voted on to pass. So repassed. So, um, I was wondering, I just think that we should, one of the things that people have said is really successful is if we can put out information, some success stories in the years leading up to, um, to the ballot initiative being voted on. And I know 2028 sounds really far away, but the county has even talked about, should we do it in 2026? And then if it's not successful, we would have time to do it again and not let it sunset because there's so many super important things included in that initiative. So anyway, I would, I think one of the ways that Town of Breck could help get that information out is if we took, if we found a few, you know, success stories or impact stories and we, I don't know if we would tape them ourselves or work with, um, Bradley and get, you know, the TV station involved, but I'm sure he would be more than happy to tape those for us. But if people up here, but also staff can start thinking about who could we interview? Who would be, who would tell a compelling story? What, how can we help this be successful? Because I think if every town does a few, that we could really get a good, um, organic sort of, you know, support, supportive message out there.
Building Hope rely on those funds to get going off the ground?
I don't think to get off the ground. I think Strong Future came after.
That's an organization that comes front of mind for me because there is the mental health money in there that's so.
And they're, they're one of the ones that I've talked to about this. I mean, they're very interested. They're very, everybody's very engaged. But I think the more, um, it's just, it seems to be very difficult to get information out to our community. So I think the sooner we start and the more people who are reaching to their community, the better. The information's gonna get disseminated. So I'm really interested in us playing a role in that success. And I think we can do that.
Do you think we need to coordinate or would best coordinate? Like, I don't know if it's the PIO group, maybe it's different. I don't, it might be different people for different communities. But to get all of the communities and the nonprofits on the same page.
I mean, I think definitely, I definitely don't want anyone to think, what is Town of Breck getting out in front of every, everyone? But at the same time, I feel a sense of urgency. I mean, it's almost 2025. If that's gonna go to the ballot in November of 2026, that's like a year away. And once the ballot language is finalized, we can't even be putting that stuff out anymore. So, I mean, I almost feel like, would it be okay if we said, hey, we're gonna start making a few videos? We'll send them your way. Let us know what you think. And if you guys want, and if people are excited about them, maybe they'll make, make them too. I don't know, I, I'd love to take a little more of the initiative to get this started. Cause I feel like we've talked about it at Mayors and Managers several times and we haven't moved it forward yet.
Kelly, if the failure of the school district's bond issue last year is any indication, they didn't get out ahead of it. They weren't prepared to submit it to the public. And I think you're right. It comes up round faster than you think.
It does. I mean, even the really like pretty simple stuff that we put on the ballot didn't pass. And it was because people didn't know what they were voting for. People didn't understand. And so just that messaging is hard.
Just have Garrison Green tell the story.
Yeah, right. About the kids?
I did see today, for the first time, um, an ad for CMC's ballot initiative. I think it's 7A where they want the ability to, is it move the mill or whatever the, the thing is?
To go back up to where they were.
Which is what they had before and now they don't have. But it was a great video. It was like kids doing things and it was talking about how we need EMTs and nurses and firefighters and that they do that training as part of CMC. So that's the only reason I was thinking of the coordinating. It'd be really great if the county, whoever could do something similar to your point to say, these things are really important. And, you know, here's what that looks like.
Well, we'll just continue talking to him, I guess, a little bit.
Well, now we can talk with our communications folks and see what we can come up with.
Okay. All right, anything else? Great work today.
Good job.
Great work to you all. Anything else before we?
No, I think everyone should have dinner and relax a little bit.
All right, let's go have dinner and we'll be back at 7:00. Okay. All right, the time is now seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the town council regular meeting for October 14th to order. Roll call, please, May.
Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton.
Here.
Steve Gerard.
Here.
Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
Present.
Todd Rankin. Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. Approval of the minutes, town council minutes for September 23rd, 23rd, 2025. Does anyone have any changes? Okay, minutes stand. Approval of the agenda.
So just one change, we will not have the BTO update tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're gonna move into communications to council. Now's the time for public comment. This is on non-agenda items only and there will be a three-minute time limit. Please come up and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Alexander Horn.
Welcome.
Uh, like I said, my name is Alexander Horn. I am an actor and theater artist with the, oh. Yeah, Chuck, thank you so much. Uh, as I said, my name is Alexander Horn. I'm an actor with the Breckenridge Backstage Theater. This is my third time with them. Uh, I'm not here to speak for the theater today. I'm here simply because I'm getting my masters in arts administration and leadership from Wichita State University in Kansas. And a part of my coursework is coming to some sort of public forum, public meeting and speaking. So thank you for this opportunity, uh, to do something that I do all the time. And just as a quick note, thank you to all who are patrons of the theater. It's a wonderful institution. If you are a regular patron, thank you for coming. If you're not, we invite you. There's always a seat. Uh, and thank you for this opportunity. Yeah, have a nice night.
What other shows have you been in? You look familiar. I think I've been to one of them.
This summer I was in Young Frankenstein. I was the monster. Yeah, that guy. Uh, and then I was in the workshop that they just did of a new musical called The Great Divide. And now I'm in their Halloween show. Yeah. Thank you all. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Xander, thanks for coming.
Hi, my name is Tracy Ochoa and I've lived in Breckenridge for over 20 years. I'm here tonight because I recently received confirmation from the Breckenridge Police Department that they have no community events, programs, or education initiatives for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Only reposting other organizations' information on Facebook. Domestic violence and intimate partner violence are not just private matters. They're community health and safety issues. They impact victims, children, schools, workplaces, and the overall health of our, of our town. Law enforcement is often the first responders to these crises, so when the response is passive, it leaves prevention gaps and sends the message that this issue is not a priority. According to the CDC, one in three women and one in four men experience physical violence by an intimate partner. But domestic violence also includes emotional, financial, legal, and coercive control. Forms that may not leave visible marks, but that destroy stability and safety. The American Psychological Association reports that three to four million children are exposed to domestic violence each year, often suffering lifelong effects. Yet less than half of those incidents are ever reported to police, meaning law enforcement only sees part of the problem, making a proactive prevention and education essential. Across the country, police departments are taking stronger leadership roles by partnering with advocacy groups in ho- to host public forums, trainings, and awareness walks, providing and facilitating presentations and education in schools to help young people recognize unhealthy relationships and running year-round prevention campaigns and education for both officers and the public. These are simple, proven steps that reflect integrity, community, and communication. The very core values posted in our own police department's lobby. They also align with community-oriented policing, which emphasizes prevention and engagement in the community. I urge this council to encourage our police department to do more than just repost hotline numbers, issue a statement, partner more visibly with a rise, provide prevention training and outreach. Let survivors and families see that this department stands with them, that they will be believed, supported, and protected. Our community deserves a police department that leads on domestic violence awareness, not one that steps aside. Survivors are watching, children are watching, and they deserve to see action. Survivors are watching, children are watching, and they deserve to see action. Thank you for your time.
Tracy, thank you so much for coming and bringing this important, very important, um, thing to our attention. And I just want you to know that our police department absolutely wants to be leaders in this area and be responsive. And I know that as they go through some, um, changes with leadership right now, that they will absolutely be addressing this in the future and will certainly, um, give them every opportunity and the support that they have, that they need to make this a priority. So thank you for coming and being so brave. And thank you for bringing our little future leader so that she can see what, um, what her mom is standing up for. I think that's just a really amazing thing. All right, any other public comment? Okay, public comment is closed. We are going to go into second reading of council bills. Council Bill number fifteen, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance amending Title Four, Chapter Three of the Breckenridge Town Code regarding alcoholic beverages, licensing regulations to remove references to drugstore liquor licenses and make other minor amendments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, before you this evening for second reading is a proposed ordinance that would amend Title Four, Chapter Three of the Town Code to remove references to the liquor licensed drugstores. The state recently enacted legislation prohibiting the issuance of new licenses for these establishments. The town currently has no liquor licensed drugstores, so this update will align the town code with current state law. Staff recommends council approve this ordinance on second reading and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, May. I'm just gonna give a little extra time so that she can translate, just to make sure that everyone's getting everything. Um, any questions for May? All right, any comments from the public on Council Bill number fifteen, series twenty twenty-five? All right, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
We approve Council Bill number fifteen, series twenty twenty-five, title which has been read into the record.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Uh, Councilmember Rankin, absent. Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page. Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Moving on to Council Bill number sixteen, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance amending the Breckenridge Town Code concerning restitution to be awarded to victims of crimes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, you have before you a proposed ordinance regarding the timelines for when restitution is ordered um, in the municipal court. Um, there have been no changes between, uh, first reading and second reading on this. The changes to the town code will result in the code being in alignment with the state law, um, regarding restitution timelines. So we recommend that you approve this on second reading. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Keely. Any questions? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number sixteen, series twenty twenty-five? Public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move we approve Council Bill number sixteen, series twenty twenty-five, title that's been read into the record.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call please, May.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin is absent. Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman. Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, moving on to Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance approving an amendment to a lease of the Breckenridge Professional Building.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here for the second reading to request, uh, the lease renewal for US Bank, a tenant at the Breckenridge Professional Building located at one thirty Ski Hill Road. Uh, they are requesting a three options to extend the period of three years to their current lease, uh, taking the term to May thirty-first, twenty thirty-six. And staff is recommending approval of the lease extension, please.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move we approve Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty twenty-five, the title which has been read into the record.
Any further discussion? Roll call please, May.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin is absent. Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, we're moving into new business. We do not have any first readings of council bills uh, nor any resolutions. So we are going to move into the Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission appointments.
Mayor and Council, the Social Equity Advisory Commission, um, oh, Helen Kosplicz for the record. Equity Advisory Commission, um, recently had two vacancies, one from August and the other with a term, a regular term that will be ending at the end of November. A small subcommittee consisting of Jordan Burns, Carol Sade, and Flor Cruz conducted interviews after an application process and, um, extensive advertising for this position, these two positions. At the end of the interviews, um, they concluded that Carlos Lopez and June Walters would be their recommended appointments for these positions. And so the, um, commission is recommending that council appoint Carl, Carlos Lopez and June Walters to the two open seats on the Social Equity Commission. The, um, appointment language is at the bottom of the memo for when you're ready.
Thank you, Helen.
And, oh, I will mention that, um, Carlos is here with his family, I believe. So thank you for coming. We appreciate it. And June is an incumbent.
At June, okay.
Yeah, and I'll just add, since I was part of the subcommittee, we had a handful of really good, passionate, thoughtful community members and it was a difficult decision, but really Carlos and June really impressed us with their responses, approach and willingness to really volunteer their time with our community. So thank you to Carlos and thank you to June. Um, so with that, I move that we affirm the recommendation made by the Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission and appoint Carlos Lopez and June Walters as members of the commission for dur, duration of three years, beginning in October twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Can I have a roll call please, May?
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman. Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin is absent. Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Thank you, Carlos. We're welcome. We're very happy to have you.
Hopefully you and your family will stay so you can get a picture with us afterwards up front.
Okay, great. Thanks, Helen. All right, planning matters. Um, planning commission decisions. No call-up? Sounds great. All right, and we've already done report of the town manager and mayor and council members. Anything to add? Okay, any other matters?
One note on the events committee meeting for November. It will actually be on Tuesday the fourth instead of Wednesday the fifth. As is currently listed. I'll get with Peyton on that.
Great. Thank you very much for updating that. All right, anything else? On the budget, everybody. Meeting adjourned. Will you come and get a picture? And council, maybe we can all just come around and?